Let me know when that is ready to go. It's not working. Yeah. Good evening, councillors, officers and members of the public that have gathered here this evening, and viewers who are live streaming tonight's meeting. My name is Julie Williams, the Mayor of Darabben, and also the person chairing this evening's meeting. It is my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's council meeting. And this meeting will be livestreamed. And for those who would like to watch it later, it will be available in due course, practical after tonight's meeting. I'd like to acknowledge the traditional owners of the land on which we gather here today, and pay my respects to the Warranjerry, the Warrarang, for the traditional owners of the land, and for their continuing connection to the land, waters and cultures, and paying also my respects to elders, past, present and emerging. I'd like to also acknowledge the members who are here this evening. So before I commence, I'd like to acknowledge I have councillor Hanon, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton, councillor Lawrence, councillor Messina, councillor Gaetano, and I believe that councillor Dimitriatus is on her way. And councillor McCarthy is also on his way. I'd also like to acknowledge this evening our officers. So I have Kylie Bennetts as our acting CEO this evening. I have Jodie, Sam, Vanessa, Jacinta, Melanie, Wendy. And for apologies, the only apologies I have this evening at this point in time is Peter Smith, our CEO, who is absent. Officers, councillors, do I have any disclosures of interest that people would like to declare this evening before we go ahead? Conflicts of interest? Councillor Lawrence.
Yes, through you, Mayor Williams. I have a general conflict of interest in a matter of agenda item 11.1 in regards to a family member with residential amenity interest who lives close to Northcote Golf Course.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Are there any other councillors or officers that would like to declare a conflict of interest or an interest? Thank you. I will continue on to the meeting. Confirmation of the meetings of the previous minutes. I believe that we need to have a mover of the ordinary adoption of last council meeting that was held on the 27th of March 2023, and the special council meeting that was held on the 30th of March 2023. Councillor Dimitriatus?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I've got an amendment to the meeting, to the minutes, sorry.
Sure. And your amendment is? I'll ask you, do I have a second for that? Councillor Lawrence? So up on the screen, can you explain?
Oh, yes, sure. It's just that the minutes were lacking this particular section, which is seen in the video, the council video of the meeting. So it's just outlining the steps that actually occurred about item 9.1, which was the quarter two financial report. So it's just a minute those. Thank you.
Councillor Lawrence, did you want to speak to the item?
No, it just reflects what happened.
It's just a small adjustment. So all those in favour then, I'll put that to vote. That has been carried unanimously. Thank you. The next agenda item I have on this evening is the council's occupational health and safety responsibility. As council does have a health and and healthy and safety responsibility, ensure that anyone attending this evening at tonight's meeting, online or in person, that they both feel safe and physically and emotionally in an environment that they feel quite safe in. Question time. So public question time. We do allow 30 minutes for public question time. And if that time exceeds, we will allow a procedural motion for another 30 minutes to occur. If there are no, we will not take any questions from the floor unless you have already submitted your questions before 12pm today. I will allow three questions and you will be allowed to speak for two minutes maximum. So please be mindful that this is question time only and not a time for making statements. There will be no questions allowed that reflects or anything that involves our notice of motions, petitions, urgent business items, as they will not be accepted under our governance rules. I'd also like to say that if your name is called and you're in the gallery, you're more than welcome to come up to the lectern and we will ask for your name and suburb and you can speak. If you're not in the room, we will have one of our officers read out your question and one of our general managers will actually answer your question on your behalf. And any like-minded or any like-like questions or similarities, they will be grouped together as one question and the person who brought their question first, it will go under their name. So tonight, we'll start with question time and I'll hand that over to our officers to call up the first person.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor. The first question is from John Nugent. I don't believe he's here this evening. John's question is, could you please advise if the clubs that received field lighting at Donath East, Dole Avenue and Moor Park, did these clubs pay a contribution towards the costs?
Thank you, Melanie.
Through you, Mayor Williams. Thank you for your question, John. With the high state government stimulus grant funding ratio for these projects, which was 90% state government and 10% council, clubs were not asked to contribute to these sports field lighting projects.
Thank you. And second?
Okay, through you, Mayor. We have three questions from Ruth Jelly of Northcote. The first question is, will parka tier bike parking cages be installed at the newly revamped Bell and Preston stations? The second question is, why does Darabben Council continually ignore the safety concerns of cyclists in Reservoir and only fund cycling safety projects in the southern postcodes? The third question is, once delivered, the Your Street, Your Say group, a project will improve safety on Darabben's roads. Projects to reduce speeds and manage trucks, like those adopted in Reservoir, will also improve safety for people riding bikes.
Thank you. Over to our officers.
Thanks for your question, Ruth. Regarding your first question about parka tier facilities, the Bell and Preston Station upgrades are being delivered by the Level Crossing Removal Project team. And both stations will have parka tier cages. Concerning your second question around cycling and Your Street, Your Say, once we do deliver the Group A projects, they will improve safety on Darabben's roads and will reduce speeds and manage trucks. And that will improve safety for people riding bikes. And regarding your third question where you ask, has council analysed whether there is enough parking available in permit zones throughout Darabben to accommodate the additional permits to be allocated per household following the adoption of the new parking permit policy? Ruth, no, this detailed assessment is underway now. In March, council endorsed a draft policy for engagement and we're currently seeking community feedback on this draft. We'll undertake further analysis before a recommended policy is considered for adoption.
Thank you, Vanessa.
The next question is from Carmen Muscat. I don't think Carmen's here. Through you, Mayor, three questions. I understand a number of people have lodged statutory declarations with the Victorian Local Governance Association, giving notice of withdrawal of consent to be placed under surveillance by any device operated by any government bodies, including councils, including but not limited to the facial recognition, number plate reading devices, audio recording devices and GPS. How does council propose to accommodate these requests? The second question is, is council going to comply with the request of such people that all images and surveillance details retaining to them be destroyed? And what proof will you provide of this? I understand sworn affidavits testifying to the destruction have been requested. And the third question is, is council aware that withdrawal of consent means that any further surveillance is a breach of the Surveillance Devices Act 1999, which can be penalised by fines or imprisonment? Thank you, Sam.
Over to Sam Hewlett. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks Carmen for your questions. Council's consulted the Victorian Local Governance Association in relation to your queries and is awaiting further advice. We're also conducting our own research on the privacy matter you have raised and once these investigations are complete, we'll provide you a response.
Thank you, Sam. The next person I believe is possibly in attendance, which is David Smith. Is David here? David, please step up. Just state your name and your suburb only and you can ask your questions.
Right. David Smith, I'm a resident of Preston. So can the council please explain why they are allowing the removal of mature trees, open green space and public facilities at the corner of Bruce and Mary Street in favour of fully enclosed cricket nets? My second question, why has council not considered having seasonal training facilities backing on to the oval, similar to opposing cricket teams within the sub-district cricket competition, and maintain an existing open space for the benefit of the residents of Darabben? My third question, will council commit to providing continuing updates regarding the removal of public open green space and community facilities to the residents of Darabben Central Ward and the over 120 people that I've spoken to over the weekend pertaining to the the removal of the park at the corner of Bruce and Mary Street?
I also have a like-minded question from Simon Rodder of Preston. Simon here, so I'll get you to stand up and ask your questions if you can state your name and your suburb. And then I'll have Melanie McCain, our officer, will answer both of your questions.
Thank you. Simon Rodder, resident of Preston. Also want to start by acknowledging the traditional custodians' land on which we're meeting and their ongoing connection to nature. Given $500,000 is being spent to plant trees along High Street as one of Darabben's 10 big actions in the 2021 to 2025 council plan to increase tree canopy coverage, as well as the open space strategy, urban forest strategy and the green streets, streetscape strategy. Why are the council supporting the removal of 25 mature trees on a prominent intersection in the same area? As one of only three green spaces with a children's playground in the Preston central area, what is the justification of removing a regularly used family space at the southeast corner of Preston City Oval for a permanent fixture of a seasonal sport that largely remains locked to the general public? And please detail the council's efforts to inform the local community of the removal of the playground and trees at Preston City Oval and if there was any community consultation to assess the desirability of the changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Over to Melanie McCain. Thank you.
Through you, Mayor Williams. Thank you for raising these issues, Simon and David. We are aware of community concerns in relation to the relocation of the cricket nets. And officers are briefing councillors on the Preston City Oval cricket nets in early May. And we can and will provide more information following that briefing.
Thank you very much. Do I have a Futos Kapalopatis in the gallery? Is Futos not here? I'll ask our officers to ask the question. Thank you.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor. What will the council do about the deterioration impact of the constant disturbances and safety concerns from a property on Ashton Street? Owned reports of dangerous dog incident and piles of rubbish on Macaulay Street?
Thank you. I'll ask Vanessa to answer that question. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Williams. Thanks for your questions, Futos. The managers will contact you on Wednesday to discuss your concerns.
Thank you. In the gallery, do we have Maureen Wilson available? No, if Maureen's not, then I'll hand that over to our officers. Thank you.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor. Maureen's question is in relation to shortage of accommodation for low-income people on government social security payments. The question is, what outreach or resources does the council have to provide support and to link people to appropriate resources to prevent them from becoming homeless? Given that once a person becomes homeless, it is difficult for them to obtain secure housing again.
Thank you, Jacinta. I'll get Wendy to answer those questions if Wendy's available. Thank you, Wendy.
Through you, Mayor Williams, and thank you for the question, Maureen. Council works through and with our partners and local agencies to provide information on referrals for people at risk of experiencing homelessness. Council has funded an assertive outreach programme for people experiencing homelessness by linking them with local housing and health support services. In March, council confirmed its position to continue its advocacy work to support initiatives to address and respond to homelessness, including additional crisis and affordable housing and functional zero approaches.
Thank you, Wendy. Do we have Michael Ricardo in our gallery this evening? Michael? No. If not, I'll hand that over to Jacinta to ask your question. Thank you on your behalf, Michael.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. Why is the council using non-union contractors? The council is paying the same rates for non-union, for example plumbers and asphalt contractors, as it would for ununionised contractors. It just means the workers get a far lower portion of fair share.
Thank you, Jacinta. I'll hand that over to Jodie to answer Michael's question.
Thank you for the question, Michael. Council has a large workforce that delivers a range of services for our community. Council prioritises its own workforce, but on occasion contractors are engaged to fill a variety of short-term needs, like filling vacancies when recruitment is carried out or where staff illness may impact service delivery for our community.
Okay, do we have Marion Utterwater available? Marion not here?
Atwater.
I'll hand that over to Jacinta to ask on behalf of Marion. Thank you.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor. The questions, the first question relates to the risk management policy and report at item 9.1 this evening. The question is, can the section of the risk management policy for roles and responsibilities please be amended to include a reference to the governance and management checklist? Question two, how did the council communicate the introduction of a cat curfew to the wider community after the decision was made in August 2020? The third question relates to fixed penalties for certain parking infringements. The current value of a penalty unit is $184.92, which seems way out of proportion to the minimum wage or even the average wage. Can councillors please give consideration to reverting those parking infringements back to 0.2 penalty unit as a way of acknowledging the cost of living pressures in Victoria?
Thank you, Jacinta. I'll go over to our officers. Jodie Watson, are you available for answering those? Thank you.
Thank you for the questions, Mariana. I'll respond to your first question regarding the risk management policy tonight. Council's risk management policy is a high-level statement of its intentions and directions as to how risk management will be managed. The governance and management checklist you reference provides a broad overview of the status of council's governance arrangements with 24 items, including the three that you refer to. We do have a range of mechanisms in how we manage our risk profile with council. We have a risk management framework, which is designed to embed effective risk management processes and oversight across the organisation. This includes elements that are reported through the governance and management checklist. I appreciate your suggestion. However, at this time, we believe the allocated responsibilities in the policy are appropriate.
Thank you, Jodie. I believe that Vanessa will also be answering the questions in reference to the animals.
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding question two, council communicated the introduction of Darabben's cat curfew on our website. We specially created FAQs and also on our social media accounts. We also made information available at council's libraries and also at customer service centres. Regarding your question three, the value of a penalty unit is set annually by the Victorian Treasurer under Section 6 of the Monetary Units Act 2004. And that's updated on the 1st of July each year, in line with inflation. And as a part of the current 2023/24 budget process, council is considering fees and charges for next financial year.
Thank you, Vanessa. I'll go over to the next person, Facilios. Is Facilios here available in the chamber? If not, I'll have to our officers. Thank you.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor. In the recent words of Darabben CEO, Mr. Smith, we're absolutely committed to being open and transparent. Will council reassess their question time rules to make it more accessible and transparent to the community by allowing community members to come and ask questions without being required to submit them prior to the meeting?
That'll be over to Jodie Watson. Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Facilios. The governance rules were recently reviewed with the oversight and suggested inputs from the previous municipal monitor. One of those changes did relate to public question time, the design being to ensure that officers were adequately prepared to respond to inquiries through public question time. At the time of amending, we did put the governance rules out to community consultation for input. There will be further opportunity for us to review the governance rules in the coming 12 to 18 months, at which time there'll be opportunity for us to assess how well that is working for the community and based on feedback. So thank you for your feedback and question.
Thank you, Miss Watson. Do we have Serena O'Mearly in the gallery this evening, Serena? Thank you if you can step up to the lectern.
Serena O'Mearly, Reservoir. Please provide each of the annual amounts of money broken down by year, which have been collected via the developer contribution plan after it was reinstated following its lapse in 2014. Do you want me to run through all three?
Yes, if you could. Thank you. Thanks, Serena.
Darabben Council ceased posting the minutes of its advisory committee meetings online some years ago and now only posts attendance lists and topic areas. By definition, these bodies influence the decision-making of Darabben Council and their minutes should be made publicly available, in line with council's transparency obligations. Can you explain why minutes for the advisory committees are no longer posted online? And the third question is, when members of the community make submissions to the budget process, they do so with the understanding that their representations are public. In many cases, they make their presentations in person and are filmed doing so. Yet in recent years, the names of presenters have been redacted from the minutes, possibly more accurately, not included in the minutes. Again, this is out of step with council's transparency obligations. Will council ensure that the names of all submitters are minuted along with their proposals in the upcoming budget consultations? Thank you.
Thank you, Serena. If you'd like to step down back into your seat, that'd be great. I have Vanessa, who will answer part of your question one. And then I'll have Jodie to answer question two and three. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for your questions, Serena. The new Darabben Development Contributions Plan only recently came into effect on the 25th of January this year. And that was a part of Amendment 170 Dare. So to date, approximately $37,000 has been collected in the two months since its introduction.
Thank you for your question, Serena. On question two, I need to take that on notice to do some more investigation to understand what has occurred over time and we'll come back to you. On your third question, I can confirm that the names of the people who made verbal submissions on the 2324 budget on the 14th of March are included in the minutes of the meeting. Whilst their name is referenced, their personal details such as address and phone number were redacted from the minutes in accordance with our privacy policy. I would also just note that council submissions to the draft 2324 budget have occurred and taken place. So whilst the budget will be proceeding to community consultation from the 22nd of May, that will be an exhibition process. There is no secondary hearing submissions. Thank you.
Thank you. If people in the audience and councillors, can you please kindly check your phones that they are on silent? They are quite distracting when they do go off, but thank you. The next person I have that have questions this evening is Bill Jennings. Is Bill Jennings in today's gallery? Okay, thank you. If you can just quote your name and your suburb and answer your questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Bill Jennings from West Preston. Very big crowd tonight. I note the growing numbers of games played at Northcote Public Golf Course in the calendar years of 2020 and 21. Both years recorded over 21,000 and 24,000 games respectively, after just over 17,000 games were played in 2019. Could council provide the total number of games played at the course in 2022 and the number of games played to the end of March in 2023? Question two, when councillors speak to the media, are they required by the current code of conduct to ask the mayor's permission to do so? And are they allowed to express a personal view when speaking as a councillor? And question three, I note the national outpouring of affection when the news of the passing of former Victorian of the Year and social justice champion Father Bob Maguire broke last week. Father Bob was born in Thornbury on the 14th of September 1934. Could I ask if council might explore an appropriate way to publicly acknowledge Father Bob's extraordinary life, seeing that he was born in our municipality?
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate your time coming this evening and asking those questions. I'll hand that over to Melanie McCarty, who will answer your first question. And then question two will be answered by Jodie Watson. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions, Bill. In 2020, 26,542 rounds of golf were played at the Northcote Public Golf Course. And from January to March 2023, there have been 7,695 rounds of golf. My apologies. Sorry. Yes, the big number was 2022, the smaller number this year. Sorry.
And Jodie will answer your second question. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions, Bill. For your second question, I can confirm the code of conduct recognises the mayor as the primary spokesperson for council and is supported by the media, social media, council media and social media policy, excuse me, which was reviewed and adopted by council in February 2023. The updated policy states that any or all contact between the media and individual councillors should be referred to the mayor and/or the Communications Engagement and Customer Experience Department, preferably ahead of any response being provided by a councillor. The policy also states that councillors are entitled to express an independent view as long as they make it clear that they are unofficial comments, are their own personal view and does not represent a position expressed by council. I hope that clarifies that one for you. I'm so sorry to hear of the passing of Father Bob Maguire. Council does actually have a memorials policy designed to give guidance on how we may go about commemorating someone like that. And so what we'll do is have an officer contact you later in the week to provide you with details of the process to make that submission. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes tonight's question time. I will go straight into submissions, that there are no submitters that are registered this evening. So I'll move on to petitions and we have no petitions also. So we'll move on to consideration of reports this evening. Apologies, in reference before we start that, I'd just like to make a statement which, that we do have a very strict timeline this evening in reference to agendas and what time we have to get things through under our governance rules. In relation to amendments, if no councillor indicates opposition or a desire to speak to an amendment, I will put the item to vote or the amendment to vote under the governance rule 7.6, sorry, 4.76 of number 14. And I will exercise my right if need to in reference to if an item I feel is need to be put to vote. I'll move on on to our consideration of reports this evening.
Move a procedural motion to readdress the agenda to listen to the Noms. Arms notice of motions, eleven to twelve, please, first.
For the notice of motions to be heard this evening in front of the agenda items. Okay, do we have a second for that? Councillor Demetriadis. I'll put that item to vote. All those in favour? I have Councillor Demetriadis, Councillor Greco, Councillor Messina and Councillor Lawrence, all against. Councillor Hannan, Councillor Rennie, Councillor Newton and Councillor McCarthy, and I abstain. I've got to use my casting vote. No, I won't move the agenda around. The reason being that I've used my casting vote and I won't move the agenda around is because we went into this issue some weeks ago and it got very messy. Thank you. Consideration of reports this evening, I'll go into risk management policy is the first item. If there are no submitters, do I have a mover and a second for that one?
Happy to move the motion, Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor McCarthy. Do I have a second for the item? Councillor Hannan, thank you. Councillor McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep it brief. Councillors would be aware because we have had multiple briefings in relation to this item. Council needs to have a risk management policy, as councillors would be aware. This is a revised risk management policy. It incorporates new risk appetite statements, which are included as an appendix to the policy. I would like to thank our council officers for their work in relation to this. It is important that council, as an organisation, and councillors as representatives, and of course, council management and the public are aware of council's risk settings. These vary, as councillors would know from item to item, and relate everything from a high-risk appetite on some issues to a low-risk appetite on others. And of course, high-quality assessment has occurred. I just draw councillors' attention to the table which is included in the agenda, which outlines key risks, both financial sustainability and environmental sustainability risks, organisational, and of course, risks in relation to our social environment as well, and of course, also our legal environment. Councillors, I just wanted to highlight the fact that council has for some time maintained a low-risk appetite when it comes to some areas such as our environmental sustainability. We do not wish to see our environmental sustainability put at risk, but we have a high-risk appetite when it comes to taking action to protect our environment. And I think it's important to recognise that each risk assessment, based on every area of council's work, relates specifically to how council views its role. Likewise, there are some areas where council has limited influence over risks that it has high exposure to. And so councillors would see that there are different risk ratings depending on where we stand in relation to those areas. I won't speak much more apart from that, Mayor, other than to say a thank you to our officers for their work on this, and I endorse the recommendations put forward.
Thank you, Councillor Hannan. Do you want to speak on the item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I echo the comments made by Councillor McCarthy, and I'd just like to focus for a moment on the financial risk, some changes that we've made there or amendments. We all know that there's increasing challenges financially for the long term for Darabhan Council and all councils. And we'll be looking to make some important decisions about those in coming months with a budget to come, as well as a long-term financial plan. And the decisions we make tonight on our risk appetite will drive and provide the foundation for some of those longer-term decisions. You can see them there, the changes that have been made in the report. One of the key ones is the ratio of unrestricted cash having a range of eighty percent or greater. This is basically the ability to have liquid assets or assets that you can be converted to cash to pay debts as they arise. And it's not a figure that's just been invented, it's a figure that's come from good practice and standards across the state. And it actually will be an important step for council to take in committing to that. It won't happen overnight, but it's an important step to commit to that. And in doing so, it's an important one for Darabhan in ensuring good long-term financial management. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Hannan. Are there any further questions or, sorry, not questions, any further speakers on the item? If not, I'll put that item to vote. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously. Thank you. Nine point two, adoption of the place and road, sorry, and road naming policy. Councillors, do we have any questions to our officers first? Question, Councillor Messina.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to explore an unpacked item number twenty, on page twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five, under libraries, intersexuality naming of to be explored across naming priorities. My understanding was there was going to be three multicultural name and one in Wondry Warung name. So I just want to unpack that because that's been changed in the report. Physically seen that.
Just give a moment for our officers to answer your question. Thank you. Page twenty-four. Twenty-five. Twenty-five. Under libraries.
My apologies, Councillor Messina. Through you, Mayor Williams. The naming priorities identified, as I recall, resemble those that were previously reported to council, reflecting changes that may have occurred in terms of some of the capital programme priorities changing. But in terms of the libraries, I don't believe that three were specifically specified previously.
That's not what I recall. It was three in multicultural names and Wondry-Wondry naming. That has changed since the distribution.
So, Councillor Messina, I think what you're recalling was some discussions we had at council briefing as opposed to what was put through the council report, but I can certainly have a look back through to confirm for you. I appreciate that taking on notice at this stage is not helpful. Acknowledging it's not subject to council decision tonight, it's there more for context for how some of those naming priorities would be prioritised over time.
Thank you. I've just noticed that, so I apologise for that. But I'd like that to put on hold, and perhaps we can address it at a briefing. That'd be great.
Thank you. Are there any further questions to our councillors this evening, to our officers? If there are no further questions, do I have a mover from the item? Councillor Greco, do I have a second?
Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry, I'll go second.
Yes, if it's with the item that I've circulated.
Councillor Newton. Councillor Greco, you're the mover, and Councillor Newton.
But mine also had an amendment. Yep.
So, Councillor Greco, you're moving with a slight amendment. I believe also that there's been communication with Councillor Newton with her slight amendment that you've combined together, and you're the mover, and she is the second at the moment. Is that correct?
Mayor Williams, mine is actually an additional point to the point that Councillor Newton has put up.
Excellent. Thank you for the clarification. Question in reference to the changes or? Sorry, but Councillor Demetriadis, you've missed your time in reference to asking a question. I did ask several times if you have a question. Councillor Greco?
I've just waited for it to come up. And then I, once it does come up and people have an opportunity to read it, then I'll have some questions in relation to my particular change for the officers.
Okay, so Councillor Demetriadis, would your questions be relating to the changes that are on the whiteboard?
No, they're in relation to Councillor Messina's question in regards to the libraries. I just wanted to see if we could put that in as amendment as well, whether the officers are able to put that in as an amendment.
Okay, I'll just get clarification. Might be a moment. And I'll just wait for this item to be up on the screen first.
If we're going to vote on it, I think it should be there, and it should be reflective of what was discussed in terms of the dissection of the libraries, the three in multicultural names and the one in Wondry-Worung naming.
Your question would be then to Councillor Greco if he would consider that minor changes to be added to the item rather than have another amendment as a separate amendment. So ask Councillor Greco if he's able to add that items into his amendment.
Sorry, the question was directed at me. I just got an inbox from the officer, so could you please repeat that, Mayor? Sorry, apologies. I was referring to this amendment through the officer's message.
So your question that you were asking earlier?
My question is in relation to
The libraries.
The libraries, libraries intersexuality of naming to be explored across naming priorities. Sorry, Mayor, I should stand. During briefings, that was more further detailed. In this report, it is not. So I'm just wondering if there can be an amendment to reflect that it was based on what was discussed during briefings and what was the report that was circulated.
Which is not a problem from our officers' perspective, but so you might want to ask Councillor Greco if he would be willing to accept your amendment into this at the moment.
So just further explanation, I guess the amendment would be further explanation to explore what councils were advised during briefings in terms of the libraries naming.
If we get the wording for that and we can put it up, I'm happy to include that in moving my motion.
I know you've just said that by email, but I can assure you that there was further discussion and unpacking of those library namings, and we've discussed it as a collective many times.
Just so I can help, Councillor Messina, you want me to find those words from briefing last year?
Or then perhaps we can address and say that the naming of the libraries will be three multicultural names and one in Wondry-Worung language. Perhaps we can amend the policy to say that. Will you accept that, Councillor Greco?
I've got to see the wording. Let's get the wording up. Let's get the wording up if we can.
Mayor, could I move a procedural motion that we suspend debate on nine point two and move it to after nine point four, so that some of this stuff and the clarification can be tidied up?
Do you have a second for your procedural motion, Councillor McCarthy? Put that to vote. All those in favour? That's been carried unanimously. We'll move on to the next agenda item. Thank you. We'll move on to property matters report for April two thousand and twenty-three. Do I have a mover for that item and a second? Councillor Rennie, thank you. Councillor McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. This month's property report deals with two matters at different stages of the statutory process for dealing with discontinued roads. The first matter is in Kelvin Grove, Thornbury, and it's the beginning of a process noting that a resident has expressed interest, and that process will now go to notice so that people who live in that area can make submissions. If there are no submissions, the CEO under delegation will be able to finalise that matter. The second matter relates to property in Darabhan Boulevard, and that has been through the necessary statutory processes for disposal of land. And through this motion, council will confirm that sale of land, and it will be completed under delegation by the CEO. These are standard matters that come to council on a regular basis, and I don't anticipate any issues. Many residents are very pleased, in fact, to be able to acquire this land, and it provides a revenue stream for council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Rennie. Councillor McCarthy.
Mayor, I'll just reserve my right.
Are there any other councillors that would like to speak on the item? If it's in their ward? No? Would you like to speak now, considering you've reserved your rights?
Only just to echo Councillor Rennie's point and just to thank our officers and of course also to recognise that these processes are regular and consistent within council. And it's fair to say that in relation to these particular cases, it's my belief, based on what I've read here, that council's gone through all the necessary processes for us to proceed. Thanks.
Councillor Rennie, did you actually read out the addresses? I think that might be important.
Mayor, I read the streets. I didn't read the entire addresses there in the agenda. Would you like me to?
I think it's important that we read the addresses where it's impacted.
So the first is in Kelvin Grove Thornbury, as I said, and it relates particularly to the property at the end of, at the back of number nine Kelvin Grove. The second relates to lots five and fifteen on the title plan, selling those to the owner of twenty-two and twenty-four Darabhan Boulevard, West Wall.
Thank you. I just think it helps the context for those who are live streaming and understand exactly where we're talking about and what it all really means. If there are no further speakers, then I'll ask councillors, I'll put this item to vote. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. I'll move on to the next item, which is the governance report for April two thousand and twenty-three. Do I have a mover on the item? Councillor Rennie, and a second for the item? Councillor Newton, thank you. Over to you, Councillor Rennie.
Thank you, Mayor. I should have said that in moving this, I'd like a slight variation to point eight of the officer recommendation. And that would be at point eight where it says approves the mayor's attendance. It would be to approve the attendance by the mayor, Councillor McCarthy, Councillor Newton and Councillor Rennie at the Australian Local Government Association's National General Assembly. I'll just check. I don't believe any other colleague has expressed interest this year. If there is any other colleague who wishes to express interest, I'd be happy to add any further names.
Can you kindly read out the names that?
Sure. So approves the attendance of the mayor and councillors McCarthy.
So there's Councillor McCarthy, yes.
No. Councillor McCarthy, Councillor Williams, oh, it says the mayor, so that is you. Councillor Rennie and Councillor Newton.
Are there any other councillors that would like to attend Canberra? It's a very, very important event where I know that a majority of our councillors have attended in the past. If not, over to you. Thank you.
Thank you. This month's governance report is actually quite a short report and deals with a number of nevertheless very important issues. I'll be brief in what I say in relation to those. One of those that I found particularly interesting was item four. It notes the Freedom of Information Statistics for the period of the first of July two thousand and twenty-two to the thirty-first of March two thousand and twenty-three. And I highlight this because I know it's an area of interest to our community, and it goes directly to the issue of transparency. I personally believe we can probably do better in trying to actually make information accessible to residents prior to the requirement of people to put in a freedom of information request. But note that for privacy and other reasons, that isn't always possible. But I do think it's a report that as councillors, we should be very mindful of and look for opportunities to make sure that the community can access information on sensitive matters if and when appropriate. I might also note that there are some matters relating to the CEO Employment Matters Committee. Those understandably are confidential matters as per the Local Government Act. And that this governance report also talks about the deliberate engagement in relation to council's ten-year financial plan. This, as we know, has not been an easy matter to deal with, to think about how do we do justice to the principles of deliberative engagement as required under the Local Government Act in constrained timelines and a very different context to when we established an initial deliberative panel at the beginning of this council term. So as usual, I commend this report to all councillors and to community members, I thank the many staff involved in putting it together because it's a significant body of work, but as usual, I think is one of the most important items in our agenda with understanding council process and transparency, thank you.
Thank you councillor Rennie, councillor Newton.
Thank you Mayor, I'll just see if that's all right for now. But yeah, I'd like to second the governance report. A couple of things I think are worth mentioning is that the ALGA conference in June is going to be an important event for the, I think it's four of us to attend. We put forward some motions to that conference last month about regulation of social media bullying towards candidates and councillors, looking at climate resilience funding and a community infrastructure programme, so we're hoping we can advocate that at national level in Canberra. And Darabin is also one of the lead councils on the Mural Task Force for asylum seekers and refugees, so I'm certainly also hoping to participate in some of the meetings with MPs they're setting up about making sure that asylum seekers and refugees are protected. So really looking forward to that and I think one other thing that I'd like to mention is just that we also have tabled the hearing of budget submissions and we asked community members to distribute 100 points across the themes and services aligned to our council plan and I think it's worth noting that of all the respondents we got, it really seems like our values align to community values, 13.6% of the respondents were allocated, 13.6 to open spaces, parks and natural environment and 11.1% to sustainable transport as well as 11.1% to aged disabilities. So I think just worth noting that we have asked our community about how we're going to distribute our resources in our budget and we'll be confirming that over the next month or two, so yeah, that's it.
Thank you councillor Newton. Are there any other councillors would like to speak to the item? Councillor McCarthy.
Thanks Mayor, I just wanted to just expand slightly on councillor Rennie's reference to the deliberative engagement questions, I think it's worth drawing councillors' attention to these because I think it's important for us to recognise the importance of this process as per the Local Government Act, but also the depth of questions that have been forward. So I just wanted to share those with councillors so that we are all clear on the deliberative engagement questions and I thank my colleagues for their collaboration in getting us to this stage. So the questions that we have before us that will be going through the deliberative engagement process, one of them is council was currently developing a leasing and licensing policy for consideration in 2324, what are the principles that should guide council when they're considering this policy? Another one Mayor, is what are the considerations and principles that council should apply to guide its capital investment decisions, in particular what should be the balance between maintenance renewal and new capital investment? And Mayor, I would just make reference to those, but also recognise the fact that when we ask our community to participate in these processes, we do so with a view that what they come back with, we will take on board and it will form a significant influence in the way in which council considers those matters. So I just wanted to recognise that piece of work because it is a new process for council in this term and also just to add to the reference as well to freedom of information, but also to say that just in relation to the activities of council and councillors, there is an extensive summary of all the meetings that councillors attend and all the various committee meetings as well, I know that was a question in the chamber earlier, including which councillors attend which meetings and of course what's discussed at those various committee meetings. So I just wanted to make reference to that Mayor and just to recognise that that information is important, it's transparent and we should be held accountable for our participation in those processes, thanks Mayor.
Thank you councillor McCarthy. Are there any other councillors that would like to speak to the item? If not, then I will put the item to vote, all those in favour? That has been carried unanimously, thank you. Because we did a procedural motion for those who are watching online, we will go back to the procedural motion that we moved an item to be heard after this item, is to go back to the adoption of place and road naming policy. I had councillor Greco as the mover and I had councillor Newton as the seconder and I believe that we were doing a couple amendments and we're waiting for those amendments to show up on the screen. Can you kindly read the amendments and show that that is your notice of motion, you're happy with it, in collaboration with councillor Newton and councillor Messina, thank you.
Can I ask a question about that Mayor?
Yes, you can.
Through you. I just want to understand point six, so it says to be referred to consideration in the development of the 2024/25 council plan action plan, what resources would be required or what would be referred to the action plan that wouldn't be covered in the policy currently?
Over to our officers, councillor Jodie, thank you.
Thank you for the question councillor Newton, just to clarify, point six and seven refer to an amendment that was made when the draft policy was reported to council in November and I think that's the reference that councillor Messina was raising, was they were, it was resolved by council that would be referred to those council plan action plan development processes? So the wording you have at point six and point seven essentially are both taken from that resolution of council, the main difference being I've inserted the date just to explain why and where, if that helps.
Thank you very much. Councillor Hannon, you have a question?
I also have a question, I also have a question on this, this is the first time we've seen this, so my question is, in referring the library naming to the development of the council plan action plan, does that also include referring to the budget? There may have been some overlap with councillor Newton's question just now, but does it imply that we're also considering the budget implications? Could we make that explicit if needed, thank you.
Through you Mayor Williams, councillor Hannon, just to be clear, the resolution of council was to refer the library naming to the 2425 council plan action plan, which will be next year, not this year. So the intent was in developing the naming policy, councillors, we had, we did have discussions around how we then would bring those, that policy to life in terms of some of the naming opportunities and so what was in the original report in November identified some opportunities whilst it wasn't as explicit as individual libraries and the way in which they would be named, certainly were broad statements around elements of them and that's what's providing the report tonight for you, with the exception of RLC, which is not considered a current naming opportunity at this time. So if that helps you, there would be some naming opportunities for the next financial year, some of those have already been planned by officers. For example NARC, the North Gooder Creek Recreation Centre, has already been planned and factored into the budget, if that assists.
A follow up if I may, sorry.
Can you kindly stand councillor Hannon? Thank you.
Thank you Mayor, look, I appreciate that and I appreciate we are talking in 2425. With great respect, I don't believe it answers the question of, does, considering the development of opportunities as part of the council plan action plan, imply that it will also be considered in the development of the budget for that financial year? If not, could we make that explicit, thank you.
Thank you councillor Hannon, I may just provide one clarification just to correct myself, I had understood that the naming for NARC was provided for in the budget, I'm getting an indication from the manager of recreation libraries, that may not be quite the case and I have misinformation, so my apologies if I've misled you on that. We could certainly adjust this, to be clear, it references the budget, so for example, if it was a capital project and the naming was built into the project, that may not require a separate budget consideration, it may have been factored into the work, whereas something like the libraries as an example would be discreet effort that would require consideration for budget in that financial year also. So it would be appropriate to make that adjustment.
Councillor McCarthy.
Thanks Mayor, I've just seen point seven for the first time, which I appreciate effectively helps, if my correct in understanding, move things along into this process, so I just would ask if there needs to be some words included in the motion, I'm happy to move an amendment to the motion to give effect to the budget considerations that are raised, but I would just like officers to provide those words to us, if there needs to be some reference to the budget process, where that should be, so if that's required, that would be helpful, thanks.
Councillor Greco, would that be helpful going forward?
Sorry Mayor.
Councillor McCarthy has made suggestions about referring it to the budget.
What the whole...
No, no, as in referral for...
I would prefer to leave it as it is, yeah. I would prefer to leave it as it is.
Mayor, maybe if I can re-ask my question again, to give effect councillor Greco and councillor Messina's additions, is it required that there's a reference to referring into the budget? So if I can ask through you to our officers, is it, is there, does there need to be a reference in the motion to refer this into our current budget process to ensure that those naming priorities in 2324 can actually be followed through as outlined in the report?
Jodie?
Thank you for the question councillor McCarthy, I would say yes for completeness, we have a briefing on Wednesday to progress some of those discussions, so certainly we will have it on the agenda then. I'm not clear on what has been factored into the budget or not for next year in relation to those naming priorities, we administer the statutory process, but when, yeah, so it may be helpful to include that reference too, yes.
Councillor Demetriadis and then councillor Messina.
Sorry, if we're talking about the 2024/25 budget, we haven't even considered that, so I don't see why we'd want to refer it to that particular budget.
Through you Mayor Williams, it was with point seven in mind councillors that refers to the development of the 2324 council plan action plans, which is the broader naming priorities, not just the libraries identified at point six.
I have councillor Messina first and I'll go to you councillor Rennie, councillor Messina.
That's okay, Ms Watson answered my question.
Thank you, councillor Rennie.
I wonder through you Mayor, if I could seek advice from Ms Watson as to whether adding the words "and budgets" at the end of point seven would be sufficient to give action to that, so two words at the end of point seven "and budgets"?
Through you Mayor Williams, yes councillor Rennie, that would dejust it fine.
Would councillor Greco accept that and the seconder councillor Newton?
It's fine with me.
Mayor Williams, I actually need to see the wording to actually be precise about it, otherwise we're just...
It's just been added, which is the two words right at the end of point seven "and budgets".
Therefore I need to understand from officers, because the officers are the ones that are going to be interpreting this motion, what the consequence of that is and can we be very clear about it because we've had situations where we've had motions that have been unclear and then it makes it very difficult for the officers, so let's get it right because we'll be endorsing this naming policy tonight, hopefully.
Through you Mayor Williams, councillor Greco, this recommendation as it is, if it was to become a resolution, essentially at point seven, it's endorsing the referral, so it's not guaranteeing that budget will be allocated in 2324, it's not guaranteeing that naming will be undertaken, it is essentially council resolving that it will be referring those for consideration in the 2324 process and 2425. Point six is slightly different in terms of being very specific about incorporating those naming priorities, but again, it is for consideration the development of the 2425 council plan action plan, which will be for not the coming year, but next year's council plan action plan. So in short, if your intent is to make a decision tonight that is more concrete than that, the decision you're making is that you will collectively consider it as councillors to factor into the draft budget, which may mean some things that are considered currently priorities may need to be adjusted to create sufficient funding available for something new or different.
I know you're gathering your thoughts councillor Greco. Councillor Demetriadis.
So just as clarity, if we put the words "and budget" in number seven, does that mean that none of these requests will have, will be solid unless it's catered for in the budget?
Ms Watson?
Jodie, could you speak up too, please? Sure, thank you for the question councillor Demetriadis, essentially the only thing that confirms what goes into the draft budget is what is presented to council and resolved by council following community consultation at its meeting in June. So certainly we have had experience of things being changed on the floor when the draft budget is presented to council, but essentially this will not necessarily confirm and ensure that it exists, what it does is it confirm that it's referred to and that councillors will collectively consider it and make decisions around prioritising the various areas of priority with regards to budget and council plan actions.
Councillor Messina.
I'm just going to go through and just, thank you. Furthermore, I just note that 2023 has several items that are listed that perhaps are not in this year's budget, but that doesn't preclude us from moving some of those other items into this budget, does it not? Yes. Sorry.
I refer to report, item number 9.2, page 24, it says that the following naming opportunities for places and wards are going to be considered for this budget, however, that does not preclude council to readdress some of the priorities, like the libraries, into this year's budget.
Ms Watson?
Councillor Messina, you're right, it doesn't preclude you from building it into the budget, you're still developing your council plan, action plan, reviewing it, you're still building your budget, it hasn't gone to consultation yet.
Can we go forward?
Yes Mayor Williams, we can go forward.
Thank you. So I take that that you've now accepted, mover and seconder, mover, would you be happy to speak to the item please?
Thank you Mayor Williams, finally. Mayor Williams, this is a really important council policy and I'm really proud to be moving this policy and I thank the other councillors that have made their contribution. Why it's important, Mayor Williams, is that we have a city of Darabin that if you look at all the naming in the city of Darabin, they reflect basically Anglo-Celtic names and there are historical reasons for that obviously. If you look at the demographics of the city of Darabin, nearly 70% of the people that live in the city of Darabin come from a migrant background, that's quite a significant number. In Victoria, the numbers are about 55%, we actually have got an over-representation of people from diverse backgrounds, so that's why this policy is really timely. The other thing that's very important, extremely important, is that we have a high concentration of people from indigenous background that live in our city. Not only that, but as we know, that the indigenous people never ceded their land, but they've got no reflection in terms of naming that reflects their languages, their culture and the history of indigenous people. So what this policy is trying to do is that it's actually prioritising firstly, the Wurundjeru language and ensuring that the Wurundjeru language is reflected in the naming of places in our city. Also as a secondary priority, as I mentioned earlier, it's also ensuring that future names reflect the cultural diversity of our city because of its demographics. Also another important feature of this policy is that it's also highlighting that naming has to occur and there has to be a gender balance in naming. What does a gender balance mean? A gender balance means is that there has to be a concerted effort to name places with women's names because they've been completely underrepresented over the life of this city ever since it was formed. So that's why this policy is important, that actually sets the record straight, it makes our naming provisions reflect the reality and the historical reality in which this city lives and also recognises that the people that have made enormous contribution to this city and have made this city their home and as we know in Victoria, Australia's becoming even more and more multicultural, so we need a policy like this. And I'll just end on this note, I'm hoping that my grandson's grandson, when they get on Google and they're looking for a street or a place in the city of Darabin, that it will not only be an Anglo-Saxon or Celtic name, but it will actually be a name that reflects the indigenous history of this place or that it reflects the cultural diversity of this place, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Newton.
Thank you Mayor Williams, so I commend this adoption of the place and road naming policy to council, this is something that I think all nine... Um, this is something that I think all nine councillors are very, very passionate about. So if you think about something like Naurangri Stadium, we are popularizing Wurundjeri and Woiwarrang words, uh, within our community that will be used for generations. And I think it makes a significant difference to our community to have these names. Uh, the way that we have thought about it, and we went over, I think, hours and hours and hours of how to do this and how to get it right, we've looked at the primary priority being Wurundjeri and Woiwarrang names, um, which I think will make an incredible difference to our community. We've looked at recognizing our cult communities, and we're also particularly, um, a strong passion of mine is gender equality. And when names are named after an individual, we hope to reach a target or a quota of 75% women, which I know that we did get some feedback in the consultation that it should be 50/50. Um, but what this is doing is redressing a balance where it has been nowhere near 50/50 until now. So I'm sure if you looked at all the names, all the road names and street names, they would be predominantly by men. Um, so by reaching the target of 75%, uh, we hope that we will eventually reach that 50/50 gender balance. Um, and I think it's worth saying that, um, our ambitions are very strong. Um, and I think this is a really, really good thing for us to be able to put forward, because some of the decisions and the names that we will have will be here for decades and decades. So if you think about the new, what is now known as the Northcote Aquatic and Recreation Centre, that will have a culturally and linguistically diverse name for the whole life of that centre. So the decisions we're making here tonight and in future, uh, will have impact for decades to come. So I commend this policy to you, council.
Are there any other councillors that would like to speak to the item? Council McCarthy?
Um, thanks, Mayor. Um, I support everything that's been said by the mover and seconder, and I, um, also would like to commend them both and other councillors, um, for their collaboration in getting us to this stage. I would also echo Council Newton's comments that this is something which I think every single councillor on this table feels strongly about and would like to see the best possible outcome to redress historical, um, inequities, but also to recognise the fact that the city of Darabin, many of the place names up until recently, uh, were named after people who happened to be, um, around at the point in time at which subdivisions occurred or played a particular role when in, in relation to, um, land, uh, so-called settlement. Um, we can use other words to describe, uh, that process, but effectively the carving up of this area, um, meant, and if you were involved in that, meant that you were very likely to have your name somewhere. And there are very few places in this city that reflect the much longer history of people's settlement in this area, um, which of course has been referred to by my previous councillors. Um, I want just to recognise in relation to my own ward, which is the South West Ward, um, I'm incredibly excited that there are a couple of locations that actually have been identified in the 2324 schedule of proposed names, um, that will have, um, Woiwarrang language names, um, proposed. One of those is the proposed Kendall Harding Street Bridge, um, which is a, a joint project of Darabin and Marybeck councils. And of course, there is a bit of work to do in relation to that project. But should that proceed as, as proposed, that will have a name that is nominated from the Woiwarrang language in consultation with elders. Um, likewise, the new open space at the Northcote Golf Course, um, names will be proposed from, uh, Woiwarrang, uh, in, in Woiwarrang language or potentially about Woiwarrang people. And I think it's important to recognise that sometimes we may have the nomination of a name or a word which reflects and represents what that place or space, um, is all about. Um, and a great example of that is the Wakwak Bridge, which of course connects those two neighbouring municipalities. So Mayor, I want to thank everyone that contributed and, uh, thank our officers for working with us to get us to this stage.
Thank you, Council McCarthy. Are there any other further speakers or anybody who wants to speak in opposition to the item? If not, then I'm gonna put the item to vote. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. We'll move over to, uh, item number 10, items to be tabled. I do not have any items to be tabled this evening, so I'll move over to notice of motions, which will go straight into item number 11. Councillors, do we have any conflicts of interest in reference to this item?
Um, yes, um, Mayor Williams, as I mentioned earlier, um, I have a general conflict of interest in this matter in relation to a family member with residential amen interest who lives close to the Northcote Golf Course. And I will be declaring that interest and, um, vacating the chamber.
Excellent, thank you. We do have an item this evening, which is the Northcote Golf Course. We'll just wait for Council Lawrence to leave the chamber before we start the debate. Thank you. Do councillors have any questions to officers at this point in time? If not, then I'll go over to the mover of the item. Council Dimitriatus, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I had a bit of an amendment to what was published in the agenda.
No problem. Can I ask our officers to kindly put that amendment on, up on the screen? And I have Council Greco as the seconder to Council Dimitriatus's amendment, sorry, uh, notice of motion this evening. I'll give, uh, councillors a bit of time to read that amendment that has been.
Just in regards to point six, um, the second line, it says a revised nine-hole layout, but, um, we wanted to, uh, we were hoping to have it to say, uh, to progress a revised viable nine-hole golf course layout.
Council Greco, are you happy with those amendments that have been put up? Okay, not a problem. Thank you. Council Hannon, I believe you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just have, I have a question on that, uh, revised amendment. If we could have that up again, please.
Yep, I think our officers are working on that at the moment. Sorry, Council Hannon?
Okay, um, again, this is the first time I'm seeing this, so I have, it's, I'm just trying to figure it out. Um, in item number seven, uh, through you, Mayor, my question is, in the bold where it says, um, no spending or works are being undertaken at the Northcote Golf Precinct until these reports, et cetera. Um. Sorry. Firstly, I don't think it makes grammatic sense. Uh, I'm sorry, until Council receives all the reports. Apologies, that's fine, grammatically. My question is, will the effect of this amendment enable council to undertake works such as, um, protecting safety and security and privacy? Um. Emergency works, essential maintenance works? Um. Or other, I mean, you know, unplanned works at this time which may be required? Um. And will that apply only to the current golf course as per the current border? Will that also prevent that kind of work to the surrounding park and paths? Thank you. Uh. I also, I have another question. I wonder if I should come back to that or ask?
Sorry, we'll just go with the first question first. Mr Hewlett, you able to help?
Um, through you, Mayor, as I read point seven, to answer the question directly, uh, I think, I think the, the effect of the amendment means no spending or works. Um. Other than the design work related to this, uh, to points one A through D. I, I think, I think, it's the first time I'm reading it too, uh, Council Hannon. I think what it's saying is that there'd be no works, uh, permitted, which would include maintenance work like cutting the grass, which we consider works. Uh, so if that's not the intent of the, of the amendment, maybe an amendment to the amendment is required, but, uh, it, it also wouldn't, uh, permit sort of emergency or safety works to be carried out, as far as I can read it now.
I'm just gonna go forward, because I believe that Council Greco had an amendment also. Is that correct, Council? Because I, I. Okay, I believe that might be another slide. So I had, I apologize, Council Hannon, but I think there's been a slight miscommunication. I believe this has been circulated. Council Dimitriatus was the mover and Council Greco was the seconder with his amendments as a seconder. So those items should have come up first.
Sorry, Mayor, can I just clarify?
Certainly. So that your first amendment with clarifying was actually implying that there was no works allowed to be, uh, occurring at the golf course, and that includes general maintenance, any other emergencies or concerns or anything that would occur at the golf course would not have happened at all. With Council Greco's amendment actually allows our officers to do maintenance work, including mowing lawns and doing any emergency or safety.
That's correct. So if we can have my amendment up with those bolded ri- the bold writing of Council Greco's, um, that would cover it, cover the, um, the amendment.
Okay, we've got them here side by side.
No, that's.
No, we don't. Apologies, we've got some live stream issues that items have just not coming through at the moment. I'm gonna ask for an adjournment until we get this sorted out. I, can I allow, uh, a 10-minute adjournment, if that's okay? Would that be enough sufficient time? Yes? Only because I think we're running pretty good on scheduled time. Let's say that we come back here at 7:35. Thank you. And those in the gallery, can you please kindly refrain from talking? If you feel the need, you need to talk, please leave the chambers, as it does come through the microphone. And we would appreciate that you could chatter outside. If you feel you can't do this within reason, then I'd ask you to leave altogether and you can watch it live stream. Over to our officers is, uh, can we commence the live streaming again? Thank you. Thank you. For those who are live streaming this evening, I apologize, we've taken an adjournment just to go over a few amendments and changes. Uh, we are actually on notice of motions, which is the Northcote Golf Course. We do have a mover. Okay, if Council Lawrence can please leave the chambers, as he has a conflict of interest. So we'll wait for Council Lawrence to leave the chambers before we continue. Okay, councillors, I have Council Dimitriatus's notice of motion, which is the Northcote Golf Course, and I have Council Greco, who is the seconder with his amendments. Uh, I believe, uh, we were in the discussion, can we just kindly have those amendments on the screen? And can I ask councillors, have your amendments been circulated?
Um, yes, I did circulate it earlier in the week.
Yep, and have yours been circulated? Great. Okay, we'll go over to, I think, Emily, came at, can, uh, sorry, Council Dimitriatus. We'll go over to you as the mover. Thank you.
Mayor, sorry, I hadn't had an opportunity to ask a question, and I'm still not sure what we're voting on, if it could come up on the screen.
Yeah, let's put up on the screen.
Yeah, and that's what I wanted to double check. If Council Dimitriatus can check that that was what you, your, your motion plus communication with Council Greco and the amendments he was putting up.
Um, yes, that incorporates, um, Council Greco's change.
Um, apparently, I'm just gonna go over to our officers right now. Mr Hewlett?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, um, I think the strikeouts haven't come up on the screen. So in point six, it should reads, should read, notes that whilst the completion of a master plan, concept plan for a viable nine-hole golf course layout, so the words, um, "the nine hole" should come out, just wait for the acting CEO, um. And then. And, yes, and then in this, in the line below, uh, further expenditure would be required to progress "the", so remove the word "are", revised viable nine-hole golf course layout. Yes, I think that's correct. Uh, the rest, uh, Mayor, look right.
I'll ask again, councillors, is that word to word what you have asked as in your amendment?
Mayor, I think we've got it this time.
Yes? Great. Council Dimitriatus?
Can I ask it? Yeah.
Are we, are we?
No, no, we'll get questions in a minute. I just want to check that we're all on the same page before all the questions and debate begins. Yes? Okay. Questions? Council Newton, and I have Council McCarthy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. I just wanted to understand the intent of the notice of amendment. So if this goes ahead, does that mean that we won't be able to spend money from the grant on B and C? How is that?
Through you, Mayor, uh, no, if this, if this is voted up tonight, we will proceed with the, with A, B, C, and D. All, all four will be delivered as part of the grant. And the notice of amendment calls for a report on all four of them prior to any works, capital improvement works on the, in particular, the eastern path and the northern park. But I will deliver A, B, C, and D.
Council McCarthy?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Um, just hoping to get some clarification as to, um, the point eight. Uh, there's a reference to new share use facilities. Just wanting to understand how officers interpret that term, because it seems vague.
Through you, Mayor, uh, I have interpreted that, Council McCarthy, as the shared use space, the golf course, uh, rather than a particular area or building. I've, I've assumed it means the shared use of all of the area.
So just a follow-up then, thank you to our officers. Um, council's just adopted a road and place name policy which identifies the open space as being prioritized for naming in Woiwarrang language in the next 12 months. Point eight seems to either be in con- conflict or questions, uh, a decision that we have just made. So can I just get some clarity? Um, I'm not sure if it's a open space question or a governance advice, but it seems to actually be talking about the thing that we've already just voted on under the road and place naming policy, which specifically refers to the open space at Northcote Golf Course.
Thank you, Council McCarthy. Thank you, Councillor McCarthy.
Through you, Mayor Williams. Councillor McCarthy, I might just ask you to clarify which point specifically you're looking at to assist me.
So point eight states, notes that the new share use facility may need to be named. I've just had it confirmed from our offices that the reference of shared use facility will be interpreted as the open space, if I'm correct. If the intent is simply to note the decision that's already been made as per the road and place naming policy that's just been adopted, then that's fine. If it's to question that, which it seems, it implies a question about whether or not it does need to be named. We've already confirmed it needs to be named. Then I would suggest that that needs to be reworded. But I would seek to just get confirmation as to whether it's opposite to the decision we've already made.
Through you, Mayor Williams, if I can clarify, Councillor McCarthy, the policy that's just been adopted would be consistent in terms of approach with what's framed here, in terms of who we would collaborate with, for example. In terms of actual naming priority, adoption of the policy did not specify that that particular open space would be named. What we do have is a series of naming priorities that were in the report from 28th of November and again tonight. And those were to be referred to the council plan, action plan. So there's been no decision on naming as such made with regard to this open space. I hope that helps clarify.
Thank you. It does, it does clarify. The wording is very similar to the wording of the motion that I moved at the last council meeting, except that it questions whether they're, it asks whether they may need to be named. So I will, I suppose foreshadow, uh, Mayor, that I'll propose a slight change to the word, which will potentially change the word may to will, um, just to give some certainty in relation to that. I just have another question as well, through you, Mayor. If I'm correct in interpreting point seven, right? Can I understand when would be, if this was to be adopted, when would the construction of the eastern path, which is the eastern path running alongside the golf course down connecting to Wakwak Bridge from Mayor Park and the northern park, when would they likely to be constructed? Should this be adopted tonight? And should the, uh, the council make a decision in November? When would we see the construction of those things?
Uh, through you, Mayor. The notice of amendment calls for a report to the council once all the design work is done. Uh, I've advised previously that would be late in 23 or early 24. Councillor Dimitriatus's amendment is pretty clear that she prefers it late 23. In the event that we complete the work in late 23 and in the event that the council then seeks to make a decision to proceed with the eastern path, for example, on my assessment, the best I could begin those works would be in the first quarter of calendar year 24. But of course, it is subject to your capital works programming and how much you choose to invest.
Sorry, Mayor, if I could just get clarity in relation to that answer. When we refer to the first quarter of the calendar year, we're referring to the period, um, January to March 2024. So that's the earliest time at which that work could occur. Is that, can we just get confirmation of that, please? And, and, and at the same time, should this motion not be adopted, when would that work likely to occur?
Through you, Mayor.
Through you, Mayor. Yes, I'm just trying to go by the timeline presented. At the best, I could begin these works would be early, would be January 2024. But of course, it's subject to the council's decision and how quickly I could do the design work. In the event that this is not successful, this amendment, it is still subject to council's investment and priority in its capital works programme. The draft includes some investment for Northcote Golf Course. You haven't yet confirmed that, hasn't yet gone out to consultation. But in the event that you decide to proceed with the eastern path, our team, Mr Mackenzie's team, will have the design work done on the eastern path, for example, either in late June or early July. And construction could begin shortly after tendering, you know, after that period.
Sorry, to, um, just to ask one more follow-up question there, Mayor, if I may. Just to understand that then, if that timeframe, as, as, as is currently outlined, was to continue, um, and the tender period was to be completed, would we see construction of the path as, as described within the 2023, the current, the 2023 calendar year?
Through you, Mayor. We work quickly, Councillor McCarthy, we do. That, that would be challenging. It, it, of course, it's subject to the design and consultation, uh, tendering and whether we can afford it, whether you fund it. Uh, we will do our best.
Thanks, May.
Councillors, are there any further questions on this item? To seek clarification, so you're voting in a way that you feel comfortable? Thank you to our officers. If there are no further questions, I will enter the debate and there'll be no further questions after that. Councillor Dimitriatus, thank you.
Um, I wanted to thank officers for coming back to us and finally recommending that we accept the $200,000 state government grant to redesign the Northcote Golf Course with shared use facilities. I raised this amendment to ensure that the works at the Northcote Golf Course are suspended until after the council is fully informed of the contents of all the design and due diligence reports together, which are outlined in points one, three and four. And this is, uh, planned for the November 2023 ordinary council meeting. Now, this is, um, we're raising, I'm raising this to ensure we receive an overall picture of the whole Northcote Public Golf Course precinct, rather than wasting more resources, time and taxpayers' money on trying to implement political ideologies that have no basis. Once these reports are brought back to council in the November meeting, council will then be in a stronger position to seek state government investments for the precinct. Furthermore, my amendment at point eight asks that council work with Wurundjeri Wurundjeri Cultural Heritage, Aboriginal Corporation, the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee, local residents and other interested stakeholders to seek council endorsement of a name as per the road and name, uh, policy that we've just outlined, we've just approved. And, and that's at an appropriate time in the future, once the master plan is complete. Thank you.
Councillor Greco.
Mayor Williams, I reserve my right to speak. Thank you.
No problem. Councillors, are there any other councillors would like to speak for the item or in opposition? Councillor Rennie. Excuse me, for those in the gallery, I do not appreciate any comments. I could hear it from here. If you, as I said earlier, if you were going to make comments, could you kindly please leave the chamber?
This is a completely unnecessary motion of amendment. Council made a legitimate decision a month ago, which, uh, included some of the points here, but, um, was business as usual and just anticipated continuing with works and implementing a council decision that has been made previously. That was a council decision of last year. I didn't like that council decision last year, but that was the council decision. And it is the practice of good governance in councils to accept decisions that have been made and to get on with it and implement it. Last month, the council made a decision which was simply to move ahead with the previous resolution of council and deliver infrastructure for our community that we had said we would deliver. This motion just seeks to hold things up. And where there are delays, there's extra expense and there is a community that misses out. So it's unclear to me why Councillor Dimitriatus and Councillor Gaetano don't want to improve accessibility for people with mobility issues. It's unclear to me why they don't want to make the area safer, not only for people who are walking along the path, but.
Point of order, Mary, the, um, 10.1G and, uh, E. It's, uh, Councillor Rennie's statement is offensive for starters and it's misleading and false. She's making allegations that are completely falsified.
I'm not going to accept your point of order. Thank you. Continue, Councillor Rennie.
Um, thank you, Mayor Williams. What this motion does essentially is hold up the delivery of a walking path. And what that means is that people will continue to walk along multiple goat tracks that actually run along the eastern side of the golf course. That in doing so, they will no doubt trample more plants than they would if there was a defined walking path. In doing so, they are more likely to trip and injure themselves. In doing so, they are more likely to wander closer to the fence of the aged care premises that's next door and cause further inconvenience. Were we to build the path sooner, community members with limited mobility, including older people, people with prams, strollers and walking frames, would find it easier to access the area. Women walking would find it safer because there'd be more people on the path and a path that it would be more delineated. I don't know what the game plan is in holding up the delivery of infrastructure, which has been funded.
Any other councillors would like to speak for or against? Councillor Hannan, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also speaking against this motion and for similar reasons, um, as Councillor Rennie has stated. It's holding us all back. It's holding us broadly as a community, as a council, as staff wanting to get on with this work. There is a palpable feeling that I pick up from the community of can we please just get on with this now? So it's been stated that the intention of, of these, of this revised, this amended motion is to hold up works until we can get an overall picture of the wider area. But frankly, this doesn't, just doesn't stack up. Firstly, we've been advised that the master plan will only be in relation to the golf course site, not the path, not the park surrounding. This was what was offered by the state government and it's what's been agreed. And this is what we'll be moving ahead with. So if we're waiting on some master plan for the whole area to come, there's no plan for that, there's no funding for that. Secondly, the amendment makes it very clear that the council is moving this happy to go ahead with capital works on the golf course. No problem. It's just the park and the path that they really do not want capital works to progress with. So it's very clear that the intention of this motion is to hold up works on the park and the, on the northern park and the pathway. Now, so as I've said, the reasons stated don't stack up. What alternative reasons there might be for this motion, I can only guess. But what I will say, it is not moving us ahead as a council, as a community, in terms of our relationship with the state government in fulfilling and implementing what we said we were going to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect timing. Councillors, any other councillors would like to speak for or against? Councillor McCarthy, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. I won't repeat what the previous councillors have said, but I endorse the comments that were made. I just want to draw to council's attention that, um, point eight, was already covered, um, in the motion that was moved at the last council meeting. So that's not, I don't debate that at all. In fact, I moved that point eight at the last council meeting, a version of that, and happy to see it retained. However, everything else in this motion, up until pretty much point seven, um, was actually in the previous motion, apart from introducing the word viable, which I think is implied anyway. So what this motion really is, is, I believe, an attempt to delay what are safety works, what are works that have already been agreed to in a decision last year, Mayor. But I think what it also does is that it, it sends a message to Sports and Recreation Victoria, which is the body that is granting the funding to council through the state government. Sends a message that, um, council isn't quite sure what it wants to do. And that's not a great environment if you want to attract investment. So we have $200,000 that has been supported and provided from the state government, uh, through advocacy by our local member. Council has already adopted a motion to receive and accept that. That is the current position. What we have here is effectively saying to Sports and Recreation Victoria and the state government, we'll, we'll take your money, but we're not quite sure what we're going to do and we're not going to do anything in the short term. And we're going to send a message to our community that we're not quite sure what we're doing at this site at all. That seems like a lot of confusion and is not the sort of message I think that we as a council want to be sending to the state government or our community at this time. Significantly though, and I think most councillors would be aware, there are some very specific access and mobility issues that exist right now at this site that can be resolved. But if this motion is successful, they cannot occur and they will not occur for the rest of this year and potentially sometime into next year. And that would be a very sad situation.
Thank you, Councillor McCarthy. I've had Councillor Dimitriatus, who's been the mover. I've had Councillor Rennie speak, Councillor Hannan speak, Councillor McCarthy, and Councillor Greco has reserved his rights. Were there any other speakers would like to speak? Councillor Newton, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. I am against this motion. As Councillor McCarthy said, a very similar motion was passed last meeting. We have a $200,000 grant from the state government that is being messed with and messed with and messed with. We are in a resource constrained environment. We are a council that should be doing all we can to seek grants from state government and federal government. And instead, what we're doing is having councillors bring back an item that has already been passed to us at another meeting to mess with it and mess with it, to say to the state revenue office that we want to mess with what you've decided that we should do with this grant. I think that this really risks our ability to get grants in future and this is not the first time that it's happened. So councillors, I really implore you to vote against this motion. We have already passed this topic. We have already said we want to go ahead with the grant. So I implore you to vote against this motion. There is no benefit in messing with the grant in this way and there is no benefit in stopping capital works to build a path. There is no benefit to that.
Thank you, Councillor Newton. Any other councillors would like to speak to the item? Councillor Greco, the fact that you reserved your rights, you can speak.
Thank you, um, Mayor Williams. Look, I, I think the important point about this motion is that, uh, we have four design reports and we need those design reports to come back to us. Because we can't look at the, at the, at the golf course and now the section that's, uh, a shared use as two separate bits. They are, they are integrated, um, components. So trying to look at, trying to separate them and trying to deal with them separately, I, I think it's not really a clever way to go. I think we have to look at this idea, that what we're trying to do there in terms of shared use. And remember, councillors, the word is shared and it implies when you say shared use, that there's an integrated approach to what's happening. We're not talking about two different countries with a, you know, with an iron curtain between them. So that, that's the first point. The, the, the other point that needs to be, um, and said that is that, look, councillors, I, I really have to say this, but I, I really find it a bit rich of certain councillors here in this room saying that, um, why are we reversing motions and, and things like that? I've been the subject as a councillor to motions that have been reversed by the same councillors that are now stating that it's not worthwhile to reverse motions. So I needed to make that point and it, it, and so therefore I think it's a bit rich and I think it's a bit hypocritical of certain councillors to make that point. The other thing too is that I think we need to pass this. Is everyone is saying that we, we need to get things happening. Well, let's pass this motion so things can happen and that we can get, um, 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 things moving in Malaysia to, to this, um, to this issue. And, and again, I, I just think it makes greater sense from a planning perspective. And it's not that nothing is being done. There are four design reports that are, that will be done as a result of us passing this motion. So let's do that. Let's, let's allow those design reports to come back to us. And then we can actually analyse those design reports in an integrated fashion and then know what further steps to take forward in order to fulfil that shared use element of this project.
Thank you. So I've had Councillor Dimitriatus and now Councillor Greco, Councillor Rennie, Councillor Hannan, Councillor McCarthy. I also, Councillor Messina doesn't want to speak. Councillor Dimitriatus, you do have a right of reply if you'd like to have a right of reply. Sorry?
Mayor, I'm not certain what governance rules apply, but I think Councillor Messina was thinking the same thing I might be thinking, which is that because this is an amendment, there may or may not be.
Governance clarification in reference to a right of reply.
Thank you, May. Um, through you. The motion that is up was what Councillor Dimitriatus moved as her motion to this amendment. However, there were additional amendments made on the fly. So I would suggest that there's no right of reply.
Thank you for that clarification. If there are no further speakers, then I will put that item to vote. All those in favour of what's up on the screen? All those in favour of what's up on the screen? I have councillor Dimitriadis, councillor Messina, councillor Greco and myself, councillor Williams. All those against? Councillor Hanon, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton and councillor McCarthy. I have the casting vote, I'll put the casting vote as for the item that's up on the screen as the casting vote. Thank you, councillors. Moving on, we have the next agenda item, which is the notice of motion of 11.2. Councillor Messina, I believe that is your notice of motion.
It is, thank you, mayor, through you, mayor. I believe I have an amendment that I circulated earlier.
Just wait a moment. I'll just get councillor Lawrence back into the room before we go to the next item.
I have amendment that I've circulated hours earlier.
Thank you. And can our officers kindly get that amendment up on the screen? Oh, there it is, thank you.
Yes, that is correct, thank you.
And can we have our offices available, obviously, if councillors have any questions to this item? Thank you, we have now councillor Lawrence back in the room. Councillors, do you have any questions to this item before we start the debate to our officer? Hopefully that you've all had time to have read this as the amendment was circulated earlier today. Thank you to councillor Messina for sharing that. If there are no questions to our officer, thank you to Vicky. I'm going to ask for a second of councillor Messina's notice of motion. Do I have a second of for councillor Messina's notice of motion? Councillor Dimitriadis, thank you. Councillor Messina, if you'd like to speak to the item.
Thank you, mayor Williams. This notice of motion has considerable amount of budget process items. However, they have already been considered by this council. The migration monument to Darabban is not a new thing. In fact, it was flagged last council term. And now we see this proposed capital work sometime in the new future, lost in translation, lost in the archives again. And the multicultural oration has been delivered. That's what the council plan said, until I picked it up and said it hasn't been delivered because the Molly Hadfield oration is not a multicultural oration because in fact it is gender specific. And last time I checked, there was more than one gender that lived in, reside in Darabban. The joy and the magic of homemade food and wine festival that celebrates artisans' work from people's backyards is missing. It's been lost in the fusion of the Fuse Festival. I recall wandering Kate Lever's kitchen and backyard where she shared her knowledge of garden to table or Vicenza's winemaking in the backyard of Resible. These are examples of residents who open their homes, their sacred places, they willingly allow strangers to share their love and their passions. These festivals are just not about food and wine, it's about joy, generational secrets, neighbourhoods. These festivals brings family archives to life. It showcases techniques and skills whispered in kitchens, gardens and garages for generations. Darabban is just not a place on the map, but a melting pot of different cultures, traditions and identities. Darabban comes to life when the kaleidoscope of colours, flavours, sounds, movement, art that are reflected with our multicultural tapestry. But our cultural diversity should not be limited to festivals. A migration museum, civic artwork, would be a powerful symbol that would pay tribute to the rich history of migration and the countless people who have come from different parts of the world to call our municipality home. It should be a pillar that stands tall and a symbol of resilience, strength and contributions of individuals who have left their mark on our community. It serves as a reminder of collective identity and heritage that has been shaped by the unique cultures, traditions and stories of people who have migrated to our municipality enriching our community in countless ways. Some councillors will debate if this is in fact a budgetary constraint. I say to the council that we need to look further than just dipping into our budget, we need to look for sponsorship and that sponsorship to be aligned with what our policies are like anti-EGMs and anti-nuclear weapons and also anti-fossil fuels. Darabban's migration diversity is a treasure that we must cherish, protect and promote. It is the soul of our city and the fabric of our community and the source of strength for many. Let us continue to celebrate and embrace our cultural diversity. It is our greatest asset and the foundation of our vibrant and inclusive community. I therefore ask my fellow councillors to show their appreciation for this inclusion in the budget, not as a show of hands, but as your actions.
Thank you, councillor Messina. Councillors, do I have any other councillors would like to speak to the item? With a second. I'm happy to reserve my right. Thank you. Any other councillors would like to speak to the item? councillor Greco?
Thank you, mayor Williams. First of all, I'd like to thank mayor Messina for bringing these items to our attention. You know, the whole issue of cultural diversity has been something that I've been very passionate about in my 14 years on council and probably two or three decades of community involvement in our city. In relation to the backyard harvest festival and the homemade wine and food festival, I've got to commend the Darabban ethnic community's councils because they were the originators and we have the chairperson here, Mr Naliosurukumaran, who can attest to that. They were the initiators of those events, which I think over the years have sort of lost their relevance or lost their way unfortunately. The other point, and I've made this point in the chamber on many other occasions, Darabban council was once actually the leaders, not in Melbourne, not in Victoria, but in all of Australia, you could say, in Malaysia to multicultural affairs. And again, the Darabban ethnic community council can attest to that. I think we've dropped the ball and I've said that in the past and I think by actually focusing on these particular events actually helps to elevate and raise the profile of what it means to live in a multicultural city. I'll repeat that. What it means to live in a multicultural city where you have more, nearly 70% of people who come from diverse backgrounds. Let that sink into people's minds. And that's why these types of initiatives need to be promoted. Also, what needs to be said is that we have a new intercultural setup. The new intercultural centre was based on the idea of having interculturalism and the concept of interculturalism. And what that means is that the intercultural centre was borrowed, and I'll finish on this, the intercultural centre was borrowed on the Wheeler Centre and that's what we should do, we should permeate the intercultural centre in terms of having extra activities. I saw two minutes up there.
No, two minutes. Thank you, but no, thank you. Sit down, please. Councillors, councillor Lawrence, please, thank you.
Yes, thank you, mayor Williams and thank you former mayor Linder Messina and thank you former mayor councillor Greco, raising this issue and speaking to this issue. City of Darabban coming out of COVID is very exciting. I don't know, others have mentioned it, there certainly has been noted in the Melbourne press. We are going through a revolution of post-war migrants, second, third generation eateries, bars, family food, family restaurants, another whole wave. And of course, we're also having a wave of Asian, African and Middle Eastern eateries and food throughout the city. And that's the dynamism that is awakening the Darabban economy is all this knowledge about food, along with craft beer of course, which, you know, all goes together. So I think council should be about more than just fines, parking fines, and we need to bring a bit of this life, a bit of this energy into this institution and we have done it before, we can do it again.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Any other councillors would like to speak to the item? Or in opposition, councillor Hanon?
Thank you, mayor. I'm speaking in favour of the motion. I commend councillor Messina and other councillors for their passion in this area, which has been noted over various, you know, their old terms really, in various meetings that have come and items that have come to these meetings. I also just speak to appreciate the work of our staff in running all the particularly cultural events that this city has been putting on for many years. There are some great examples through the Fuse Festival, there's some truly amazing diversity on show in terms of culture, but also in terms of age, sexuality, various, you know, disability, all different types of diversity that we embrace in Darabban. In particular, I was really moved by the International Women's Day talk, the Molly Hadfield address with speakers Nimila Benson and Zuvah Gavura, who were amazing, they were really inspirational. And I actually personally learnt quite a lot about multicultural identity in arts, how, you know, the arts has, you know, historically been seen as a sort of anglocentric versus others and, you know, some inspiring work about embracing the arts to taking on the views of people from different cultures from their own voices rather than someone speaking of them about them. So mainly just wanted to express appreciation for the work of our staff in this area and the events that are on, while of course acknowledging that this is, it's not a done deal, this is an ongoing focus area for Darabban and will be for the coming council plans and budgets, no doubt. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hanon. Any other councillors would like to speak to the item? councillor Newton, thank you.
Thank you, mayor Williams. I'm happy to support this item, but I want to clarify that we have spoken tonight before in the road and place naming policy about intersectionality and I would argue that the multicultural oration was delivered in the Fuse Festival as this Molly Hadfield oration. And I think that it's worth noting that the topic was about Black Lives Matter. This speaker is a Papua New Guinean Australian, there was also a young African Australian speaker, there was also a Pacific Island choir and there was also, I think it's worth noting, Jodie Monday, one of the main organisers of Fuse, was also interpreting in Auslan on the night, which is absolutely incredible. So I really want to acknowledge that it is possible to have an International Women's Day event and it's possible to have a social justice oration that is also about multiculturalism, that it's also about culturally linguistically diverse communities. And I think it was an absolutely incredible night at the Preston Town Hall. And I think, you know, I'm more for having as much as we can, but I absolutely don't agree that the multicultural oration was not delivered. I think that it was an incredible night full of a multicultural audience and.
May I point of order, if I may? I think in relation to comments that have been made, it's a point of order in regards to that it's a misleading and false statement because the cultural diversity oration did not occur this year. What occurred this year is the Molly Hadfield oration. Let's get that clear.
So, mayor Williams, maybe it would be useful to point out the oration title. It was called Why Black Lives Matter in Creative Industries: Beyond the Illusion of Diversity and Conclusion.
Mayor Williams, again, I rise to say that it's a misleading statement, it's a disingenuous statement and it needs to be corrected for the record.
Okay, councillor, you can sit down, thank you. Yeah, and I'd have to agree with my officers of saying that even though what councillor Newton has mentioned this evening, it's up to the individual and the way they feel it was reflected and whether it's been delivered or not, but it's something that we can unpack going in the future. Councillor Messina, no, it's up to the individual if they feel that it was actually going to... Sorry? I'm not going to accept the point of order because I was actually there that night and I think it's up to the individual how they felt it was, how creative and inspiring of our officers and how they went in regards to the Molly Hadfield evening. So I'm not going to accept your point of order. So thank you. So councillor Newton, I'm going to allow you to continue speaking.
Thank you. I think that's it. I just want to really acknowledge our staff and the Fuse Festival and the incredible job that they have done in delivering a suite of artist talks, concerts, music events, poetry. It's absolutely remarkable and I really, really want to commend the staff for their work and how many people in Darabban and beyond got to experience a very diverse programme. And I think it's really worth saying that out in public, that this was a very, very diverse, multicultural, culturally and linguistically diverse festival and I commend the staff for their work.
Thank you, councillor Newton. Any other councillors would like to speak on the item? Or in opposition of the item? I too would like to, before we go to vote, I too would like to say thank you to our officers because I know that how hard it is on such a restricted budget in going forward, considering we've just come out of COVID and the pandemic, that we've had to put a lot of events on hold and coming out of the pandemic that we've had to cram a whole heap of events into so many, I guess, events, but also our council assets that we have that have been overbooked for the number of years and it's just been very difficult. So I want to say a big thank you and as I said, I like to echo my fellow councillors for our creative staff in pulling all that together and being so inspiring in reference to our creative arts festival and events that they've been pulling out the last so many months coming out of the pandemic. So thank you. I'm going to put that item to vote, all those in favour? That's been carried unanimously, thank you councillors. I'll move on to the next item. Preston Market, councillor Greco, I believe that's your item. Thank you.
Could I have a second for it?
Yes, I'm just going to ask for that item to be put on the screen and if we have a second, can we have a second for that item of the Preston Market? Do we have a second for the item? Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Do we have any questions to our officers before we go ahead? If there are no questions, I will happily go into the debate to councillor Greco. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor Williams. Look, I'm really excited to be standing here and to know how far we've come in relation to Preston Market. As we all know, on the 3rd of April, the minister belatedly released the special advisory committee report on the Preston Market, which actually basically says that the market is worthy of being saved. What the report says, and I'll just sum it up in three or four points, it basically said no to demolishing 80% of the market. It basically also said no to 2,200 apartments on the site. It actually recommends 1,200 apartments on the site. It also basically said no to 19 storeys or above on that site.
Can we just pause for one moment and stop the clock at 2:23? Just want to check and clarify, is that your item up on the screen? I apologise for interjecting then.
There should be 10 points.
There should be 10 points.
Yeah, we just don't have all the items on the screen. I think it's really important that we get clarification that all the items are up on the screen so everybody knows what we're debating on. Apologies. As a second, councillor Lawrence, are you happy and have you seen this motion? Give councillors a moment to read over the item. Councillors, councillor Greco, I'll ask you to continue. Councillor Lawrence, are you okay with what's up there? Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, councillor Williams, for that clarification. So it says no on those critical points, which was keeping the market because of its heritage importance, no to... no to being an overdevelopment and also making sure that there's a maximum of only 14 storeys across the site. 14 storeys has been the maximum and then scaling down to six and four storeys. So that's a huge achievement and I've got to commend our officers for their tenacious work over the years and also for their presentations and representation before the SAC hearing that went for five weeks with QCs and a whole heap of lawyers that were there. So we're in a good spot, councillors. It's been a long campaign. It's been a campaign that's been dragging on for about 10 years. And what the report says actually puts the market in a good position and also creates certainty for the market into the future, given that it's been recommended that a substantial part of the market ought to stay. That 80% of the market should not be knocked out. As a result of that, what this motion therefore does is that it asks that the council writes to the minister and also seek in a meeting with the minister in order to ensure that the minister actually follows through and faithfully implements the findings in the report. Also, what the motion does is that it actually asks that we write to the storeholders and the traders at the market because at the moment, there's a campaign of disinformation and misinformation at the market with the storeholders. And it's important that the council writes to the storeholders, informing them precisely what is in the recommendations of the report so that they have good, solid information and that they can make decisions in relation to their livelihood. The other thing that the motion also does, it also makes an appeal, if you like, to the owner. And it says to the owner, accept the recommendations of the committee. We've gone through an exhaustive process and that the owner should accept those conditions. And finally, I'd just like to thank the community and on behalf of the work that they all did, particularly the Save the Preston Market Action Group and also DARA, for all the work that they put in in ensuring that the market got saved. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lawrence, as a second, would you like to speak to the item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Williams. Just briefly. It's timely this came, this motion's coming up here as we've just been talking about the multicultural second wave, third wave, I'm not sure what it is, going through the city. And whether the current owners liked it or not, they bought a cultural food icon. It's actually a heart of economic ecosystem. We have the factories of authentic noodles. We have the factories of authentic coffee. We have the bars and then we have restaurants with great family food. And we have the ingredients and how to learn each other's food right here in the centre of Darabben. So it's quite a lack of imagination that we don't get back to talking about that economic engine because the original structure plan of the Preston Market that had a 10-storey maximum and it had 100% preservation of the market footprint, but did not have heritage, was based on a council that wanted to maintain the 600-plus jobs there and maintain the economic viability of it. This motion, we've had the big planning fight. The big planning fight is over. It's decided largely to support the council's position over the last two years. And it may not give, say, Preston Market, public acquisition and those things they were aspiring to, but it's given us a really huge planning victory. And now we need to come back together, everyone, the owners, the traders, the community, and make this work because it is a very precious, wonderful thing. People enjoy it in Europe everywhere, but I can tell you, there's a lot of suburbs just don't have this access to so much fresh food so cheaply, such a variety, Asian, European, every kind of food, every kind of ingredient. And I commend councillor Greco for bringing this detail motion in here.
Are there any other councillors that would like to speak to the item? Councillor Messina, thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. In 1982, a young girl in pigtails with her jumper ramped around her waist walked down Kramer Street, Wag School and grabbed the Situation Vacant sign, applied for a job. Mrs Miller was my boss. I used the skills my mum taught me as a seamstress and sole material there. The people, the names, the food, the culture, the tapestry of the market have ingrained themselves in my heart. It's a place where I felt connected for the first time with people from all walks of life who shared their stories and learned about different traditions. This sense of community and camaraderie at the Preston Market has stayed with me and left an incredible heart on my soul. My story is not different to many others. Markets have a central feature of human societies, been a central feature of human societies for thousands of years, and they continue to play a vital role in many cultures around the world. One of the most famous marketplaces is the world of Grand Bazaar in Istanbul. Its sprawling marketplace has been continuously operational for over 500 years with 4,000 stores. In recent years, however, we've seen the decline of traditional markets in many parts of the world, replaced by large chain stores and online retailers. As we embrace the convenience of efficiency of the modern retail, we must not forget the value of civic spaces like markets. We must continue to invest and support these spaces and recognise the important role they play in shaping our communities and our cultural heritage. This was our fight. We won, but we're not there yet. And I want to thank so many people, the staff, the campaign, the comms, the people in planning, councillors, hours on the community. I can't tell you, not only does that mean a lot to Darabben, but I've heard ripple effects outside of Darabben and just how it's lifted many who have advocates... Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, I'm just thrilled that we've come to this part and we've got more to do.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any other councillors that would like to speak to the item or against the item? If not, then I'm going to put that item to vote. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously. Thank you. I have the next notice of motion is the Preston Market from councillor Messina.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to, yes, I'd like to state that I've circulated an amendment that was given to me with some officers' recommendation based on some notes.
Thank you, councillor Messina. I appreciate that. Okay, I believe that's up on the screen. So councillors, do I have a second for that item? Councillors? Councillor Rennie, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Rennie.
Councillor Messina?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Williams. Firstly, I want to thank the traders that have reached out to me and I thank them for their time and sharing their stories and concerns. But I want to go beyond politics and personal grudges and the misinformation in the community. I want the veil of illusion lifted. Small businesses are the lifeblood of our neighbourhoods. They create jobs, foster innovation and contribute to the economic growth of our communities. Many small business owners poured their heart and souls into their ventures through tirelessly to achieve their dreams and provide for their families. Their hard work, dedication and resilience deserves our recognition and appreciation. Secondly, I extend my message not to Soltar Properties, not to Medich Corporation, but to Sam Tarashow Senior. Savadori, do you remember the young man who landed in Port Melbourne coming to a new country? You only knew the country by name and through black and white photos. Just like the traders, there was a desire for you to build a better future for yourself and your family. Just like the traders, you navigated the complexities of the economic system, hoping the straight road was not crooked. Your dreams are no different from those of the traders seeking certainty in an uncertain world. The establishment of a committee is crucial as a way forward to ensure transparency and inclusivity in the process. Traders provide valuable insights into the operational aspects of the business. Council members offer strategic perspectives and developers contribute technical expertise. By bringing together representatives from these key stakeholders, the committee can holistically assess risks, identify vulnerabilities and develop robust strategies to mitigate potential disruptions. The committee's collaboration approach fosters transparency as a difference perspectives are considered and decisions are made collectively. Everybody benefits. Our well-thought market business continuity plan, development plan is imperative for the success of any business. This fosters a sense of ownership among stakeholders and promotes collaboration. These are quintessential proactive measures to protect our businesses and their legacies. These plans ensure smooth transition for traders to continue to thrive during the construction phase. To the small business owners in our community, I want to convey a message. We see you. We acknowledge your hard work and the risk that you take to pursue your dreams. You are not alone. We are here to support you and we are committed to creating an environment where your businesses can thrive. To Sam, again, savadori, from your empty suitcase, you built a successful business. I urge you to consider the legacy you leave behind. Leave a mark, a historical landmark, valuing preserving the unique cultural spaces. As Sami, tu ai potere. You have the power, Sam, and I'm going to send you that text as soon as I get off and sit on my seat.
Thank you, councillor Messina. Councillor Rennie, as a second, would you like to speak to the item?
No, happy to reserve.
Okay, other councillors, would you like to speak to the item? Councillor Greco, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. Look, I'll just add a few points that I thank councillor Messina for putting this motion forward. I think councillor Messina's motion focuses on the traders, which is really important that we do focus on the traders because of recent time, the traders have been put under enormous pressure. And the sort of pressure that they have been put under, because I know many of the traders, I go there almost on a weekly basis and talk to them. And the traders, their leases have been run down. Most of them are on very short-term leases. And also, there's a lot of uncertainty and the fact that they have no goodwill with that business even if they were to actually leave the market. The fact that the leases have been run down, it's not a coincidence and it obviously creates anxiety amongst the traders. But now we have a situation where the advisory committee has said that the market can stay. That provides now certainty for the traders. We know that the owners have created a bit of uncertainty now for the traders, saying that if they are to retain the market, it would mean that they would have to close the market for up to two years. But if you look at the 271-page SAC report, the advisory committee report, it says that the market does not need to be closed down in order for it to be refurbished and for a development construction to occur around the site. Northland was refurbished, shops were closed. Knox City was completely refurbished, shops were closed. The whole shopping centre wasn't closed. So you would think a very sophisticated and prominent developer in Australia would not have the sophistication and the know-how of actually how to stage work and provide a continuity plan, as councillor Messina is suggesting here through the motion, of putting that forward. There are engineers and professional people who know how to stage work and I'm sure that the owner would have that expertise given that they are a very prominent and very important developer in the state of Victoria and even across Australia. So let's get this work done and let's make sure that the market stays and let's provide certainty for the traders. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillors would like to speak to the item? Or in opposition of the item? Happy to put that item on a vote. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously. Thank you. Councillors, I'll go over to the next item, which is starting the process of establishing a new RSL, which is a notice of motion brought from councillor Greco. Councillor Greco, thank you. So we'll just have that item up on the screen.
Oh, there it is, yep.
I'll just wait a moment. Is that your item? I believe there's been no amendments. Do I have a second for that item? Councillor Lawrence, thank you. Councillor Greco?
Thank you, Mayor Williams. Look, I'm putting forward this item in relation to the Reservoir Leisure Centre. Look, we've had a lot of debate in this council about the Reservoir Leisure Centre, about whether it should be refurbished, whether you should just get a little paint job and that would fix it up, or whether we should have a little splash pad here and there and whether that would actually do for the reservoir residents. What this motion does is that this motion is suggesting that as part of our budget process, that we allocate, and it's only a suggestion for the budget deliberations, it's not a decision that we make in here tonight, but as part of that deliberations, that we consider spending some money to start the process, which requires a scoping project about redeveloping and rebuilding a new reservoir leisure setup. Reservoir deserves a new aquatic setup. Reservoir is one of the biggest suburbs in Melbourne. It has over 55,000 people that live in the suburb. There aren't pools with 50-metre pools nearby. And Reservoir Leisure Centre, up until now, has been a very important facility of the reservoir area. So therefore, Reservoir, the northern part of our city, where there's more socio-economic disadvantage, deserves the same as what the southern end of the city gets. So hopefully, we could start the process in this budget and that we can then get that scoping project done and then work out how we're going to pay it into the future. And then let's make sure that we start moving the work towards getting into that direction. The other thing that I would say about the Reservoir Leisure Centre is that at the moment, the current leisure centre requires an enormous amount of maintenance for the people that frequent the centre. We often get complaints of leaking roof tiles falling off, hygiene issues and things like that. And also, its sheer size, the fact that it doesn't have a 50-metre pool. And the fact that when you look at the centre, as loved as it is, it's very much a very dated centre. When you look at it, it's something sort of out of the 70s and 80s and deserves a complete uplift as we move into the future because we're going to see population grow in that area. And there's lots of families in that area, lots of schools with lots of students and for carnivals and things like that. So let's start the process, councillors. Let's get it happening. And let's make sure that this budget, our next budget, actually puts in the money to make that work start, the same way that we did with the Northcote Aquatic Centre, which very shortly will be open and will be enjoyed by the southern end of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Greco. I got, just wait one moment. I had a slight amendment from councillor McCarthy that was asking to put an item in.
Who seconded it?
Councillor Lawrence seconded it. But I was just wondering if councillor Greco would be happy just to accept that without putting a full amendment? Would that be right, councillor McCarthy?
Mayor, I think it was just, if I can clarify, because it's the original motion, but now I see the new motion, the insertion of where it says redevelopment and rebuilding.
So that's in which point, point three?
Point three. I think it actually should, to be correct, it should say for the redevelopment and slash, so it should say and slash or rebuilding because they're two different things. And I would ask that we actually, we haven't made a decision about which one we would be doing. And so I think we just need to be clear about the decision-making process of council. It should actually, we should be actually having options here. And that's in keeping with, I think, what councillor Greco is calling for, which is the work to happen.
Mayor, I'm not willing to accept that change.
No. Do we have a second for that item? Councillor McCarthy? Councillor Newton? Councillor McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. Look, I'll keep it brief. No one can question councillor Greco's eagerness to see that we get on with this project. I actually think there is a timing for this project, which we need to recognise, is that aquatic and recreation centres generally have a life of around 50 years. We have been told that. That's where the Northcote Aquatic and Recreation Centre got to when we commenced the work. We aren't necessarily at that stage with RLC. So I would say that point two is incorrect in terms of saying it's almost reached its use-by date. We actually have not been given that advice and it's incorrect to state that. But I haven't taken issue with that. I'm actually really trying to make sure that we can get councillors to move ahead with this. So I'm prepared to support the motion. But I actually think we need to say for the redevelopment and or rebuilding because it may in fact be that there may be multiple stages to this. And the redevelopment process can potentially be different to the rebuilding process. Rebuilding an entire aquatic and recreation centre in the short term may actually not be the best approach. It may in fact be that we need to actually understand what is the full life cycle. We've been told that these facilities generally have a 50-year lifespan. Last time I checked, RLC definitely does need investment. I agree with that. However, it is not at that end of life period.
Mayor Williams, just a point of order. I just want to understand whether councillor McCarthy is speaking for the motion. Mayor Williams, just a point of order, I just want to understand whether councillor McCarthy is speaking for the motion or speaking against the motion?
Speaking to my amendment, councillor Greco.
Can you just clarify?
I'm speaking to my amendment. That's what's up for grabs here. Thank you. So I would implore councillors to actually just simply insert what is a very simple amendment so that councillors can vote for this or more councillors can vote for this and we can ideally move ahead with some of the work that should happen and definitely should happen in relation to RLC. But we should not be locking into what the outcome is at this stage. And in fact, at this stage, RLC, as far as I understand, is about 37 or 38 years old. So it is a matter of timing. There is going to be a point at which there needs to be significant investment in that site. That may not be in the next couple of years, but I believe it would have to be sometime within the next decade or so. And that work should commence soon, as in the preparation work. But that doesn't necessarily guarantee whether it's a full redevelopment or a full rebuild. And I think we need to understand what the options are and our community deserves to be informed as well.
Thank you. As a point of clarification, I'm going to ask officers a question that, under my understanding from what councillor McCarthy is implying, that this is going to be built within the next few years. Can I get clarification for our officers? At what timeframe are we looking at building this? And obviously, what timeframe did it take NARC? And what timeframe it would take the Reservoir Leisure Centre to get to the point where NARC got to? Thank you. I apologise for asking this question, but I usually reserve my rights of not speaking or putting in questions.
Through you, Mayor. There's a bit in that. What we know of the Northcote Pool Project, that it started well before I started here. Somewhere around 2013, from my recollection, but I think some councils have a recollection of it starting prior to that, maybe 2011. And we began construction, I think, in 2020 or thereabouts. So there is quite a lead time. I think the first important step is a scoping study to decide what you wish to build. And that will take us the best part of next year in the event that that's what you choose to do.
Thank you. From memory, I think it was at least 12 years ago when I started on council and we had this discussion. Councillor McCarthy is nodding his head also. So it's not going to be built within the next few years. It's going to take some time in getting to that point. I'm going to go over to councillor Lawrence. Thank you to our officer. Councillor Lawrence, would you like to speak to the item as being the second? Apologies. No, it's councillor Newton is on the amendment. Would you like to speak to the item?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mayor Williams. So I believe that we should have the inclusion of or because and doesn't actually make sense. So you wouldn't do redevelopment and a rebuilt. So or gives you more options. And I know that we are looking at a fairly long-term timeline now. But I think it is worth noting that Northcote Aquatic Recreation Centre was built in 1968. It was then knocked down, I think it was about 52 years later. So we really look at about 50 years or so for the life cycle of a pool or an aquatic centre. We understand that RLC was built somewhere around 1984. So what that means is we've got probably about 10 or 11 years before it gets to that 50-year mark. So I think it's very reasonable to say redevelopment or rebuilt. We have gone through this a lot in my time on council and one of the last times this came to us in 2022. It did say that overall, the building is structurally sound condition with the exception of the pool hall roof structure. And when we got the report last year, it did say the demolition of the facility is not warranted and would be an unnecessary expense. So I think it's worth looking at that advice, which was from Macutechs, as also a second report undertaken by CT Management. So two different organisations looked at that. Thanks.
I'm going to ask for clarification on rebuild, redeveloped. Mainly for councillors' perspective, because I can hear some chatter on what exactly that means in a redevelopment and a rebuild. Or should that wording be changed to give proper clarification on what councillor Greco is actually seeking? Apologise, Sam.
Mayor, rebuild's not a term that we would typically use in the work that we do. We have typically used the word redevelopment to be sort of all-encompassing. It could involve a demolition and brand-new, which might go to councillor Greco's intent. But we've also used redevelopment for major redevelopment works. So I'm not sure what rebuilding means, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm going to go to other councillors who would like to speak on the amendment. Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Williams. Yeah, I'm happy to go round the merry-go-round again on this one. Councillor Greco has put up a motion to show some intent because there's been vacillation over this issue for a while since, fairly concretely, the rejection without debate of considering this in 2019 that would have allowed us to have a proper capital works plan that catered for both sides of the city. Councillor Greco's used 55,000 people. That's not actually the catchment. The catchment in the report itself is 80,000 people. We happen to be blessed with two pools exactly in both sides of the city. Not like Moreland, who had six scattered all over the joint. We didn't have to deal with that. We had a very simple task here for 30 years. We've gone from three 50-metre pools. We've built now the third 50-metre pool in Northcote. People are talking about structures. Go and sit in reservoir in summer. You've got one-third of the space, guys. I am really finding it insulting some of the debate tonight that's immature, a false narrative about buildings.
Councillor Lawrence, apologies. Can you through me? Because I can't hear you speaking in that direction.
A false narrative about buildings' size, age, without considering the size and capacity, needs of the community. It's like 101 ignoring humanity. Now, this small amendment is just another petty game, another petty word game.
Councillor Lawrence?
Redevelopment and/or goes back to the same missteps this council has done. And we're not really debating the length of a 25-metre pool that replaced a 50-metre pool some years ago.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence.
We're actually debating whether we bless ourselves and wreck the budget.
Any other councillors like to speak to the item of the amendment that councillor McCarthy has put up? If not, councillor Greco?
Yeah, I just want to speak against this amendment. Again, what I've heard is that the issue about the age of the pool, it's not just about age, councillors. It's about the suitability of what's already there to what the population requirements are. So let's not just fix on this age question. It's about whether the pool is actually fit for purpose for the community that now lives in the pool and the expectations that the community would have of an aquatic centre, particularly when a few kilometres down the road, there's a state-of-the-art new aquatic centre that's about to be opened. So let's not just fix up on the age. The other thing too is that, as we heard from our officers, there's a lot of lead time that's required. So I think if I got my maths right, so the pool's almost approaching 40 years old. It requires maybe up to about 10 years. So even from an age perspective, we're getting there. But I think the fundamental point is this, councillors. I've been in this chamber debating this issue now for a couple of years and we have talked about development and redevelopment. And what did that redevelopment actually mean? It meant a paint job and a little splash centre. That's what it meant. That's why I'm very firm about the word about rebuilding, because we need a new reservoir aquatic centre of today's standards and today's expectations. Let's not diminish what we're actually talking about. If councillors want to diminish it, say it upfront, councillors. Don't hide behind clever words and clever manipulation of motions. If you don't want it, say it upfront that you don't want it and have the courage to say that.
Councillor Greco, can I just ask you to just quieten down a bit? It's very difficult to hear you when you're speaking through the microphone like that. Councillors, do we have any other councillors that would like to speak on the item? Thank you, the amendment, that is.
Thank you. I initially didn't think the Reservoir Leisure Centre needed a rebuild. But I have changed my mind, only because of lead time and also speaking to the sporting clubs and the sporting clubs that have no physical activity centre, that are looking for a place to swim, a place for physical activity. They don't have gyms at their centres. So I'm looking at a dual purpose and the longevity of it moving forward. Not that it's going to be built in the next five years, but the fact that it might be built in the next 10 years. So I think we need to forward plan and ensure, and in certainty, and provide certainty, not only just for the people that use it to swim. I don't go to NARC. I never went to NARC. I never go to Reservoir Leisure Centre. But I think there's a lot of our aging community that utilise the Reservoir Leisure Centre in terms of the hydroelectric pool and the spa centre. And it is falling apart. I mean, the outdoor area looks disgustingly. So I think in 10 years, we do need to redevelop it.
Thank you. Can I just ask councillors to please be mindful and refrain from speaking towards individual councillors or groups? I think it's really important and to be mindful that I'm the chair and you need to speak through me. Thank you. Are there any other councillors that would like to speak this evening on the amendment item that councillor McCarthy has put up? If not, then I'll put the item to vote. All those in favour of the word or that's been added in the amendment, well, it is, put your hand up. I've got councillor Hannon, councillor Newton and councillor McCarthy. All those against. I've got councillor Dimitriatus, councillor Rennie, councillor Lawrence, councillor Messina and councillor Greco and myself, councillor Williams. That item has failed. I will go back to the original amendment, sorry, the original notice of motion that councillor Greco has put up this evening. We had... Oh, okay, yep. Before we move on, can we do a procedural motion to extend time, please? Councillor Lawrence as the mover and councillor Greco as the second. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously. Thank you. Are there any further speakers on this item? I had councillor Greco as our mover, I had councillor Lawrence as our second, and councillor Messina has spoken on this item. And then we went into...
Have it, Mayor. I spoke on the amendment.
Oh, sorry, you spoke on the amendment. Apologies. That's my apologies. And then we, that's right.
I've only spoken on the amendment.
Yes. Okay. Are there any other speakers to the item? So we've only had councillor Greco speak to the item. Councillor Lawrence, and then I'll go to councillor Rennie.
Yes, Mayor Williams, through you. I don't want to go through all the various history of swimming in this city. I have got a family history in this city. It goes back three generations. But anyway, the issue here, and everyone I've spoken to in Bannual Northern Suburbs Council, says Darabben can have two regional pools. And we're lucky we're not trying to balance three or trying to balance six like Moreland. Other cities have also been through great controversies trying to rationalise their pools, Brimbank and out that way as well. The Preston Council got rid of a pool in St George's Road because they looked at West Preston, it was full of old pensioners in 1992, said we didn't need a pool. So, you know, look at West Preston now and whether, you know, we can dream about we could have had three large regional centres here. That time and opportunity is gone, but we need to knuckle down, commit to having a proper two-regional pools. Even the Latrobe Uni, and even though they had a conflict of interest, but even they said a major redevelopment's needed there at Reservoir. Now, I don't think we can talk about timeframes because we now know our budgetary situation and the truth of it. It's going to have to be done when it can be afforded to be done. But let's not pretend 80,000 people can just make do with a half-measure. And so let's be honest about what the aspiration, the community really feel up there.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Do we have any other speakers to the item? Councillor Rennie?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. Councillor Greco has asked councillors...
Actually councillor Williams.
Sorry. My apologies, Mayor Williams. Councillor Greco has asked people to be upfront. And councillor Greco, I have been consistent and I have been upfront with you from the day this discussion started. I'm a member of RLC and I swim there very regularly. I don't know how many other councillors are there two or three times a week swimming. I really enjoy the facility. I like it. I suspect that when Northcote reopens, I will stay at Reservoir because I almost always get a lap to myself and I think that the pool hall is really nice. The environment is really nice. The change rooms are great. Is it a 50-metre regional facility? No. Does it serve a function and do it well? Yes. And I'm really tired of this constant talking down our assets and the value they play in the community. So I think that's important to note. It would be the easiest thing in the world for me tonight to pass this because it's referring to a budget process and then we can knock it off in private in three weeks' time in a budget conversation because we can say we don't have several hundred thousand dollars to put into this initial scoping project. I'm not going to do that. I'm going to vote against this tonight. And I'm going to vote against this tonight because, as most councillors around this table have acknowledged, this is a project that will not be happening for 10 years or so at best because council cannot afford another project of this size and scope. And because the current pool, whilst it could be bigger and whilst the large reservoir community might benefit from a larger facility, the current pool is fit for purpose in that it provides a quality aquatic experience for people who use the pool, such as myself. And so I'm going to be transparent and say I'm all for doing scoping in a timely way when it's actually required to proceed with a project. If we scope now, we miss the opportunity to do the scoping in five or six years' time when the population of Reservoir will have increased again, when there will be new populations of people there and when we will get better quality information than we will.
Your time's up. Thank you, councillor Rennie. Thank you. Do we have any other further speakers? Councillor Hahn?
Mayor Williams, people keep commenting in the chamber and it's really disconcerting.
Those in the gallery who are speaking, I'm going to ask our officers to please point out who those people are and I'll ask them to please leave the gallery. I'm serious. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. I, in principle, am happy to accept the substance and the principle of this motion, but I do need to correct some statements that have been made. Firstly, a statement that, you know, the last time we made a decision on this, it was basically a splash of paint. 12 months ago, council endorsed a vision to transform RLC into a local wellness hub connecting with the East Reservoir community to quality health, wellbeing and recreation experiences with an investment of over $60 million over three sites, including $36 million at RLC. That's comparable to the size and the scope of NARC in dollars at the time. I acknowledge that our financial environment has changed and it's prudent to reassess what's needed and viable within our budget. I accept that ongoing maintenance is needed, but I don't accept the second point, which says that the facility has almost reached its use-by-date. People can have their opinions and that's fine, but they can't present them as a fact, as if it is a fact. As stated by councillor Newton, the latest expert advice that we have, I'll just quote it again, was that the demolition of a facility is not warranted and would be an unnecessary expense. Council has invested millions of dollars recently in making RLC a thriving centre and will continue to do so. And I just need to say, I'm getting a bit tired. I think a lot of people are getting a bit tired of this north versus south narrative. It's not a matter of the north of Darabben deserving the same facilities the south has. It's a matter of having the right facilities to meet their outcomes and have their... It's a matter of having the right facilities to meet their outcomes and have the best possible outcomes, particularly addressing disadvantaged areas everywhere across our municipality. And this is why I will not be putting up motions that we should establish a lake or a university or a farm in Northkot. There are different sites and our community deserves the best outcome in each location.
Your time's up. Thank you. Councillors, are there any other councillors who'd like to speak to the item? If there were no other councillors who'd like to speak to the item?
I have a write a reply. Uh, there was an amendment, but it wasn't successful. So we're still dealing with the substantive motion.
No problem. Councillor Greco, have a write a reply.
Thank you, ma'am Williams. Look, just in terms of what I've heard, I commend couns- um, our councillors for um, standing up, putting their face to it. I commend you for that. Uh, but I believe you're wrong in relation to that. And when people talk about the north and south of the city, I'll just give you a fact. Preston East and Reservoir East, under the CIFA index, which measures disadvantage, is the most disadvantaged, not in Melbourne, not in Victoria, but amongst, amongst the most disadvantaged in all of Australia. The Reservoir Leisure Centre is located near that area. And what we're saying councillors is that that area does not deserve a pool or a centre like um, we've done in Northkot. The other point is that I've heard is that we haven't got the money. We had the money for NARC. No one said boo. No one said boo. We had the money for NARC. We did that. It doesn't mean that we can't get the money for the Reservoir Leisure Centre. We have been working on that internally as councillors and we can get the money for that. I'm sure that the state government and the federal government may kick in for something like this. So let's not diminish ourselves councillors. Let's not actually diminish ourselves. I'm sorry that I'm raising my voice. It's my nature and because I'm very passionate about this issue. And the fact that this issue just keeps coming back to council and diminished by a thousand cuts the way it gets diminished, actually just blows me over. I have a grandson that lives in Reservoir. My grandson that lives in Reservoir, from a migrant background, has to, when he gets older, has to travel away from Reservoir to go and swim in a 50-metre pool. That is not fair. That is not equitable councillors. So let's get this right councillors. If we're serious about equity in this council, if we're serious about bringing everybody and all the suburbs with us.
Thank you. Your time's up councillor Greco.
Just with the richer end of our town, let's vote for this and let's get the work going.
Thank you. Can I just ask councillors to please be mindful, when you are doing write a reply, that you're actually replying to a concern of what you actually, your write a reply is about. You're meant to be bringing up items that, of what the other opposition has opposed to. So you're meant to be uh, replying in reference to their oppositions and their concerns and their objections of what they wanted on the item. So just be mindful of that. Um, I, councillors, I'm going to now put that item to vote. All those in favour of what's up on the screen there, can you kindly put your hands up? So I've got councillor Demetriatus, councillor Hannon, councillor Lawrence, councillor Messina, councillor Greco and councillor Williams. All those against. Councillor Rennie, councillor McCarthy, all those abstaining. And I've got councillor Newton abstaining. I, that has now been voted through. Thank you. The next item on the agenda that we have is, is the Voice to Parliament, which is Emily Demetriatus has brought to, sorry councillor Demetriatus has brought to council. Uh, do I have a secondar on the item? And could that item please be up on the screen? And the secondar is councillor Lawrence. Thank you. Before I ask you to begin, I do have a statement that I need to read out. So if you can kindly sit down, thank you very much. Um, I have a collective statement from the DAC, which is our Aboriginal advisory committee.
Sorry ma'am, I don't believe we're allowed to have submissions for um, notices of motion.
Uh, councillor Demetriatus, this is not a submission. This is actually a statement that I'm reading as a chairperson and co-chairperson of DAC.
You can only do that before the.
I've got governance advice before.
Under what section? Sorry, can we please get the section?
Okay, I'll get further governance advice that can express that in front of councillors. Thank you.
Um, through you, ma'am. Clause 3.4, Chairperson's ruling, where the meeting rules do not provide for a procedure for a meeting, the chairperson will determine the procedure to be followed. So as the mayor mentioned, this is not a submission, it's not a question, it's a statement that's being made.
Is a statement not a submission?
It is a statement.
And is this?
It's a collective statement that's come from the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee, the Koori members.
But I get, um, a statement is can als- is also termed a submission?
No, this is a statement of, of their voices to be brought forward. Not, it's not, it's, no, a submission's in reference to what you're.
Anyway, that's fine. If you're agreed to this, you're welcome. You know, you should read it if that's what you're.
It's a statement how, it's nothing to do with your item. It's a statement, maybe if you let me read it out, and it's, as I said, it's not exactly, it doesn't talk about your item. It just talks about how they, their value as a committee. Yep? This is a collective statement from the Aboriginal Advisory Committee that is held here at Darabben, that the members, um, excuse me, those in the gallery, can you kindly please leave and go into the other room? I will not tolerate this anymore. I'm not going to start until you all leave and go into the other room.
Ma'am, I believe I may have uttered something, so it may be myself, it may be myself, not the gallery. I wouldn't want to um, have, to, to allow a situation where it may be, and I apologise, it may be words I spoke, not the gallery.
Okay, thank you and I apologise to the gallery. As I stated, that this is a collective statement that's come to me this evening. I had received governance advice. It wasn't preempted. And it's been obviously circulated and spoken to with the, the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee to councillors. Over the last two decades, which is over 20 years, the Aboriginal members of the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee have been providing advice and recommendations to council on matters affecting Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities in Darabben. We have provided a positive direction to council on a range of cultural matters, ranging from working with traditional owners, January the 26th, and a response to our Black Lives Matters, festivals, events and Aboriginal employment, citizenship ceremonies, community awards, plus a host of other sound advice. To this, we have always acted with integrity, respect and due diligence with the Aboriginal and non-Arbanial communities in mind. We have shaped policy, procedures and practice in Darabben. In 2019, council co-developed and signed with the, with Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee and the Wurundjeri Warung Cultural Heritage Aboriginal Corporation, the Statement of Commitment to Traditional Owners and Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander People. In many ways, our work has modelled what a voice to parliament could be. To this, DAC has provided informal and formal advice on the Voice to Parliament referendum. We have asked council to please be patient. We urge council to respect our leadership towards self-determination as outlined in council's own statement of commitment. Tonight's notice of motion has been raised through a agreed process of tabling items such as this at a meeting with Aboriginal members of DAC. Therefore, this motion cannot be supported by the Aboriginal members of the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee as it fails outside of council's own terms of reference of the advisory committee and council's.
Sorry, point of order, ma'am?
No, I'm not going to accept your point of order. I'm reading out this statement.
Terms of reference measure, there's nothing in the terms of reference that, that says.
I'm, I'm reading a statement.
But I believe that's part of the debate.
Thank you councillor Demetriatus. Therefore, this motion, I'll read it paragraph again. Therefore, this motion cannot be supported by Aboriginal members of the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee as it fails outside of council's own terms of reference and of the advisory committee and council's own statement of commitment to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people to self-determination. Who sets the agen- the question is, who sets the agenda on Aboriginal matters? This motion is unnecessary, unwelcome and uninvited. Nothing is with us without us. So I'll go on to the, the notice of motion to you councillor Demetriatus. Thank you very much.
Um, just in regards to the point of order, I know officers have also said about the terms of reference. Um, there's nothing in the terms of ref- reference which is public other than clause three that states that. So I just wanted clarity on that particular item. The terms of reference for Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee is a general.
Point of order has been dealt with, so.
You didn't say you were rejecting.
No, I was, said I wasn't accepting it.
It was a, it was part of debate, debate. Anyway, I'm happy to.
If you're going to start your debate, I'll start your time now and if you want to start on that.
Um, it was in regards to your debate. Um, I just didn't, so I'm happy to.
Not my debate, it was a statement I was reading out. Uh, so I have a mover yourself and I have councillor Lawrence as a secondar. If you'd like to start to speak, you can go ahead councillor Demetriatus. Thank you.
Thank you. So um, in 2019, council signed the Statement of Commitment to Traditional Owners and Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander People, which embodies the Uluru Statement from the Heart and acknowledges the statement's powerful call for justice, truth-telling, Makarrata and a voice. This statement, including acknowledging the call for a voice, hangs just outside this chamber, who everyone can uh, read on your way out. Later this year, the federal government has announced that they will be honouring their commitment to fully implementing the Uluru Statement from the Heart by holding a referendum to recognise Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people in the constitution through um, an Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander voice. It's important that we recognise that the First Peoples Assembly, which is the independent and democratically elected body that represent traditional owners of country and Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples in all of Victoria, um, have voted to support the Voice to Parliament. And in addition, many councils have also supported um, the voice and have already become ad- begun advocacy uh, within their communities. Therefore, in following cultural protocols and upholding Aboriginal cultural rights, I've raised this notice of motion to seek the advice and views from the First Peoples Assembly of Victoria, the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee and the Wurundjeri Warung Cultural Heritage Aboriginal Corporation on this matter, to report back to council at the end of June. This allows time for all groups consulted to take their time to consider their positions and report back to council without being rushed. I'd like to reiterate that this notice of motion only seeks advice from the First Peoples Assembly, whose members have been independently elected by the First Peoples in Australia, in um, Victoria, the Wurundjeri Warung Cultural Heritage Aboriginal Corporation, who are the traditional owners of the land on which we stand here today. And it seeks advice from Darabben's Aboriginal Advisory Committee, whose members have been selected by the staff working within council. So once we do receive this.
Point of order. Um, under 10.1 is a misleading or false statement. Members of the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee are appointed by council.
On recommendation of the officers. So officers recommend and council approve?
No, it's not.
Yes, it is. We don't get to choose who's on a DAC. Officers recommend and we approve.
Debate, uh, I'm, I'm going to have to accept the point of order because that is correct. Um, if you can just refrain from speaking about a group.
Um, no, sorry, I'm just speaking about process. Uh, so that was the.
Maybe it's best not to because then you're dabbling into operations.
Um, so basically what I um, was saying was that the views of these organisations need to be considered, uh, the views of all these organisations, not just um, one particular or another. They should all be treated equally. And uh, therefore this norm is asking for advice and after receiving that advice from all these organisations, then council can choose how to proceed on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Demetriatus. Uh, councillor Messina? Okay, um, procedural motion. Do I need a secondar? What, what is your procedural motion? Can you, can you turn your microphone on because nobody can hear you, sorry?
Thank you. Sorry, ma'am. That a procedural motion that the consideration of the item 11.6, Voice to Parliament, be deferred to the 28th of August 2023 council meeting?
Do we have a secondar for your procedural motion? Two hands went up at once. Councillor Rennie, um. Okay, councillor Messina, would you like to speak?
Yes, certainly.
No, no, you can't, can't speak on the item, I've just been told.
So can I see clarity?
Yeah, I'm going to do the same. Hang on.
Yes, through you, ma'am. So debate on a procedural motion is not permitted and the mover does not have a reply, a right of reply.
Okay, so we have a procedural motion and we have to vote on the procedural motion to defer this item. Is that, am I correct in saying that?
Yep.
Through you, ma'am. I have a question about the timing selected.
Through you, ma'am. A procedural motion may be moved at any time and must be dealt with immediately by the chairperson.
Okay, I, I will deal with it, but councillor Lawrence had a question. Can you kindly just stand and repeat what you said slowly? Not councillor Lawrence, councillor Messina.
Sure.
Thank you. So people know what they're voting on.
Motion is that the consideration of this item 11.6, Voice to Parliament, be deferred to the 28th of August 2023 council meeting.
And that's what you're seconding councillor Rennie? Okay, I'll have to put that item to vote. All those in favour? That's councillor Hannon, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton, councillor McCarthy, councillor Lawrence, councillor Messina, councillor Greco and myself, councillor Williams. All those against. Uh, it's abstaining. Councillor Demetriatus abstaining. That has been carried for it to be deferred until the 28th of August. Thank you very much, councillors. We'll go over to the next item, which is urgent business items. Do we have urgent business items this evening?
Uh, through you, ma'am. I have one urgent business item to add to the agenda.
Okay, we'll just allow the gallery to leave quietly before we move on to the next item. Thank you very much for staying back. Apologies, Kylie.
Through you, ma'am. Uh, I have one urgent business item to add to the agenda tonight pursuant to section 813G of the Governance Rules that relates to the parking management operating procedures. Uh, and I believe uh, that will come up on the screen now.
Thank you. As you may recall councillors, that we did put this item up last month and um, it was a bit of to and froing and I believe it was councillor McCarthy that might have put the item on the table, which we had to stop the debate and move it to the next meeting. We're now at the next meeting, reference to this item. Um. I need to unpack that a little bit more, like where do I go from, from here? Because this is new. So do we go from where we finished off? As in movers, seconders and do we start the debate or, sorry?
Yep. Um, through you, ma'am. You are correct that it was laid on the table as a procedural motion. The procedural motion under the Governance Rules um, states that if a, an item is laid on the table, it must be referred to the next council meeting. Officers have provided information that it's not quite ready. It does require further discussion with councillors, which is why we're doing a, an urgent motion seeking that it go to a scheduled briefing on the 1st of May and be brought back to the May council meeting.
Ma'am, I'm happy to move it.
Okay, so I've got councillor Rennie and councillor McCarthy who's secondar. Councillor Rennie, do you want to speak on the item?
Ma'am, I think it's self-explanatory and it's largely procedural. It's just to make sure that we cross the Ts and dot the Is in terms of um, responding to the procedural motion at the last meeting.
Thank you very much. Councillor McCarthy, do you want to speak to the item?
I have nothing to add, ma'am.
Okay, any other councillors who'd like to speak to the item or else I put that item to vote? All those in favour? That's been carried unanimously. Thank you councillors. We'll move over to the next agenda item. Which is consideration of reports this evening. Any reports to be considered confidential? There are no reports to be considered confidential, so I'll move over to the next item, which is the close of tonight's meeting. So thank you very much. I believe the meeting is closed at 26 past nine. Thank you to officers and those who have waited in the.